Good evening. I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
All right, here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson is here, and Chairperson Carmichael?
Here. We have a quorum. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And anyone who's going to testify tonight needs to be sworn in as well. Please remain standing, raise your right hand, and swear that any and all testimony you give will be the complete truth. Thank you. A reminder to everyone, silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. And first item is approval of minutes for the November 13, 2024, regular meeting. Have a motion to approve.
Motion, Zakiri.
Second. Scales.
Motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, a review of public hearing procedures. As an item of interest, our first agenda item tonight is not, does not fall under public hearing. So, public testimony is not legally required, but all of other agenda items do. So, we start with, the petitioner comes to the podium after having signed in and presents his or her petition, followed by staff comments and questions, and then followed by the public, who can address the board with questions and comments, and finally, the commissioners, leading to a vote. Reminder that our vote is recommendation only to the village board, we're not the final approval authority. Under old business, I see we have none. Moving to new business, our first item is PCC 0322024, a request from the Village of Westmont regarding lots and parcels at North, One North Cass Avenue in Westmont on East Burlington, the three addresses, East Burlington and the unaddressed parcel along the railroad tracks for the following. First, a preliminary plan of subdivision to consolidate six lots slash parcels into one lot. And second, Westmont land development ordinance variance request to delay both the installation and cash-in lieu contribution of required land improvements until development of the newly created lot. Manager May, good evening.
Thank you. And the, you know, I'm gonna say it's like very straightforward, but it's very straightforward to me. The Village of Westmont itself owns several parcels on the northeast corner of Burlington and Cass Avenue. And in fact, when you actually look at, you know, a tax parcel map and then overlay reality over it, like on the exhibit, is you'll even see that the roadway where it has curves through there is actually cuts through one of the parcels that we're talking about before it alignment, well, actually even the alignment at Cass Avenue and the parking lot are all on individual parcels. The old Burlington Avenue right-of-way east, I say old when it used to be pavement, but I mean, the right-of-way is still there and there's still utility in there as well. So, the re-subdivision is basically taking all the parcels, reconfiguring it. Actually, I'd like to describe the other parcels that are involved, besides the ones that, I'll go back even further. You may recognize and be familiar that there was a developer a few years ago looking to redevelop that site. And I say a few years ago, and for several years leading up to that, you know, we were talking to one person about how that might work out. This today is just merely the consolidation or the reconfiguration of the parcels, and it's not about any particular development, but all of it is for reasons in advance of, you know, a potential development. One of the, not obstacles, but one of the features of the last one is that there were many individual property owners that were involved. So, there were a lot of, there were a half a dozen stakeholders in it, and coordinating all that was, was difficult for the developer and for the village. Since that development was terminated, or the economic development agreement was terminated, the Village of Westmont collected the properties that were in question, and this includes what we knew as Harrelson's Garage, that strip mall that was attached to it, the structures, you know, have since been raised. We bought 14 North Lincoln at the time because we thought that was, actually it was up for sale, so we just took advantage of it and purchased it at that time, raised the house that was on there, left the garage, we still use that a little bit for some storage. And we've been collecting the properties. So, I don't want to call us the developer, but we've been, you know, acting in all that capacity. And part of this work is to move the pavement, move Burlington, move the S-curve so that it more aligns with Linden Avenue. And that was part of the reason for collecting all these parcels, and I wanted to get down to the very one in the south along the railroad, the weird, almost triangular, but trapezoidal, you know, shape in there is, was a Burlington Northern Railroad right-of-way, and that took us forever to secure that. So, that was the biggest obstacle at the time, and now we're prepared to do all the utility relocation, relocate the pavement, and do all that, but to initiate that, the new rights-of-way have to be dedicated in a proposed configuration. So, this re-subdivision is both a relocation of the public rights-of-way, as well as consolidating everything that's left into one parcel, and then we'll work with that moving forward. So, that's a very general description. I'd be glad to answer any questions. The second part of the request is, you know, the waiver, you know, any land development, there's the requirement for stormwater management, and we know that, and that's part of the infrastructure improvements that we would do anyway. And the same thing with cash-in lieu of, it's us paying ourselves, so it's just moving it from one pocket to the other. So, the waiver is just to delay that requirement so that we can build it all, you know, we're still committing to doing it, but it'll be part of a future project, a near-future project.
All right, thank you. Staff, comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, the manager touched on a lot of things. I'm gonna go back to what he started with, which was the original approvals on this property, which I don't believe many commissioners that are on this, on this commission were there for. It was for a project, for a multifamily project on the property, multi-use building. All of those ordinances have been rescinded. It included a subdivision of the property, which was also rescinded, and that's why that never materialized there, and the lot lines are still somewhat mixed up in this area. So, today, the village has acquired the properties and is able to make the new lot itself. Today, there's no, no construction happening, no proposals for construction of any building of any kind or development. It is purely just to make the lots and have the right-of-ways realigned. So, getting into some of the specifics on the requests that the manager has already mentioned, there's six lots slash parcels that are in this area, as well as areas of the right-of-way that will be created through making the new lot. Again, it's largely to realign the road on Linden, and then also, we do have some public improvements related to commed and relocation of items that need to take place on a strict timeline, and this would facilitate some of those requests from Public Works as well. The two requests, the first is the preliminary plan of subdivision for those lots to consolidate. There's a lot of pins here that are listed, and that's because some are not addressed and some are. Some are old properties that have now been demolished, and they're all included in this Additionally, the second request for the Westmont Land Development Ordinance variance request is, as the manager mentioned, we are playing the hat of the developer technically in our code, and with subdivisions, we have requirements to make improvements to the property in the surrounding area, not just stormwater, but also right-of-way improvements along with it. And to forego those requests until the development of the property happens or commences is the route the village looks to take here, rather than doing all the improvements before any development on the property takes place. So, it's mostly just delaying it until we see any development of the property itself. The property would still be, it would be zoned B1, our limited business district zoning, as most of the properties already zone that, so there's no rezoning that needs to take place. The subdivision itself is designed, again, to relocate the road, and it has some quirks into it. I'm happy to try to answer some of those questions if any commissioners have any, but I'll leave it at that for now. I know we do have other staff members here that may want to have any input if any questions are asked.
Okay, before we move to the commissioners, could you quickly discuss the difference between a parcel and a lot?
So, there's, that's a good question. So, the parcels are largely identification pieces for taxing purposes. They're not buildable parcels of land. Those are what are called lots. So, there are a lot, there are different avenues of lots, lots of record, and then lots that materialize through proper subdivisions. In this case, there's parcels here that are technically unaddressed and are considered lots, they're not buildable in any way. The BNSF parcel is one of those. And in this case, the creation of Lot 1 would create a buildable lot, and then there's dedications of right-of-way, which are for the roadway itself and the sidewalks.
Thank you. And again, as I mentioned, this is not a public hearing issue, so I will not be calling to the public for any comment or questions, so we'll go right to the commissioners. Commissioner Lavoy, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll start. I have a bunch of technical questions on the proposal, and there's some inconsistencies in the way it's been presented. On the front cover sheet, on this sheet, okay, the south boundary line is depicted in blue as far as the underlying subdivision parcels, and on the plat, the south line is consistent, including a lot called Lot 23. But on the information that I have, it does not include that.
Yeah, it does not include that.
So, the plat is incorrect?
The plat is correct. The depiction on the first page of your packet?
Is incorrect.
Is incorrect.
Yeah, the dotted line? Yeah, the parcel, the way that our parcel view works for DuPage County, they can't take that out when we click the parcels, so that's why it's included in that, it's just for representation purposes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that when commissioners look at this, that, you know, this is different than this, and there's a reason.
Yeah.
I knew there was a reason, but also, there's a couple other things in here, and that is that along the north side of this parcel, there's an alley, but I noticed that there's a vacated right-of-way, right? And then, then the lot jumps up to the, I'm gonna call it Lot 8. And is that property depicted anywhere? Because it's not on here either, and I just, how did that, that looks like it's beyond the underlying lot configuration, and I don't know where it came from. I just want to make sure it's right.
Let me do it.
No, I can. I can explain it.
I was gonna say, anybody?
Go right ahead, Commissioner. So, the lot is in there, and it's a consolidation where zigzag is actually the old Burlington Avenue right-of-way, which is 66 feet wide. So, parts of that are being vacated. You can picture the, this developable parcel to go all the way up to the north side of the old Burlington Avenue right-of-way, but we can't, at this time, vacate all of it. So, the little notch along Cass Avenue is because there's a public water service improvement servicing the building to the north, I think the address is 15 North. So, we're just keeping that as public-owned until that issue's resolved. And in the back, it's, we've kept the 16 feet to match the alley system, so it's where we're taking the alley, the north-south alley, and turning it to Linden Avenue to circulate all that traffic, and then keeping that portion of the alley that is both servicing the, I'll just call it the delivery or the garbage of the new parcel, as well as there's a emergency egress currently for the business to the north. So, if you know their back area, there's a side door there.
Yeah, I understand where the alley came from, but it kind of threw me because it away that this is depicted, and this is different, and there must be a reason behind it, the way the lot lines are drawn, and...
It's using the old public right-of-way.
Would it make sense to do an easement over top of that public water service and include that 20, 25 box?
Maybe, and we thought about that too, and actually on the plat, you'll see there's a, you know, an easement proposed on there too for ingress-egress, for pedestrian access, so that there's still public connectivity between there, but there's greater benefit to having that private-owned.
Okay. Moving over to the east side, I see that the underlying Lot 15 has been split, and it looks like that's right at the water tower. Why didn't that lot line stay consistent with where the current lot line is?
It is both to, when you, the plans for the new pavement relocation are designed, so keeping the new pavement and trying to align it as best as possible with Linden to the north so that their, the skew isn't as severe. We went as far into that parcel as we could without adversely, you know, affecting its use, which is the ground storage tank that you mentioned.
Well, Lot 15 is owned by the village, correct?
Yes.
That would have been helpful to have on here, because now, I'm looking at the plat, and it's, it's like out in space, and it looks like it's encroaching on a different lot. I know it's the water tower lot, but it just, these kinds of things jump out at me on the plat.
That's a good point.
Also, I didn't see a provision in here for the parking easement to remain. So, the parking lot's gonna stay there regardless of the administrative task of consolidation. We've got pedestrian access easement, but we don't have a parking easement, and I think those, all those businesses rely on that parking lot to operate. So, is there gonna be a parking easement?
The, today, the parking lot exists, and it exists 100% on village-owned properties and rights-of-way. And that'll stay that way until such time we sell the parcel for redevelopment, you know, the sold consolidated parcel. And then, that parking, actually, I don't want to get too far in it, but we've already mitigated the parking, and that's what we built on North Lincoln as part of what we thought was going to be the mitigation of this parking lot under the last developer. So, there will be no public parking on this proposed parcel in the future, so there's no easement required.
But there could be an easement without successors and a sign, so it could be just until ownership transfers.
Well, don't need an easement for yourself, for your own use. We own the parcel.
I get that, but you guys don't park there. All the people that go to the restaurants and the stuff around there, the pharmacy, they all use it. And I just don't, I want to make sure that there's a provision for that, that they can still use it.
I don't think it's legally required for property that the village owns and currently uses as a parking lot, and will continue to use as a parking lot for as long as we own it, to designate on a plat that it can be used as parking. It's true with our other parking lots, so the North Lincoln, the North Cass by Manny, and those are all just public parking lots on public properties. So, it's consistent.
The, for zoning purposes, the use of the parking can continue. There's no change.
Well, that's kind of where I'm asking, you know, because I look at this plat, and there's a, there's a provision here for pedestrian access, but nothing for the parking that currently exists, so to me...
Well, the pedestrian access, that is to accommodate, once development occurs, that pedestrian access is going to remain there. But the parking isn't, once the property's redeveloped. So, again, it's not something you normally put into an easement when we own the property and it's going to go away. We're not preserving a parking easement after we sell the property. I just don't think it's necessary. I think it would be confusing.
Okay.
I think if the developer were to buy the property, but there's a lag time between when they start doing demo and development work, that we could have a temporary easement for parking purposes at that time.
And Steve, you touched on the fee in lieu of, my only concern here is that, from a public eye, Village of Westmont is waiving fees for the Village of Westmont, when we hold high standards to everyone, developers or whoever comes to the village for fees and don't normally waive fees. So, I'm a little concerned about the combining, understanding that the installation of improvements, but the cash-in lieu of contributions, I don't know what they're about, how much they are, moving from one bank account to another, but the public perception is that you're waiving fees for the village.
It does say until development of the newly created lot, so the intention, I believe, is to... Just the postponement. Postpone those fees until, and make the developer pay for them. There actually won't be any fees because there won't be in lieu of, because we're actually gonna build the infrastructure.
So, why do we have to waive the fees at all then?
You don't. I mean, it's, it's just, they're just not going to be applicable, so I'm just good with the wording that just says postpone the improvements. We're committed to doing the infrastructure.
So, for a delay in the installation of the fee?
For the technicality of it, in the land development code, we don't have the ability to waive it. We have the ability to, in lieu of the required improvements, do cash-in lieu, usually determined by the Public Works Director. However, we can do a variance for that cash-in lieu requirement through the process of planning and zoning of the village board.
I get it.
We don't have full control over that code.
I just, I just think that this conversation is really important, you know, for this hearing, to vet that, because those facts are important, and, you know, someone that could read this could say that, hey, the village does it for themselves and not anyone else, and I don't want that to be the concept here, you know? So, that's why I ask these questions. So, I'm satisfied that that's where we're going, and inconsistencies are described, but at least you knew I read it.
Yeah. It's a fun project, and it's, to say it's complex is, you know, is an understatement, so there's a lot of parts, I appreciate everything you brought up.
Yeah, and I have, you know, Steve knows this, I have a trained eye for plat work and stuff like that, I've done it for my entire career, so if these details, I'm glad, Doug, it came to me first, because some of these things you guys won't see that I see. So, it's something that, it's just important, I think, to get out there, to understand it, to get it on the public record of why these things are the way they are. So, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Zakiri?
No questions.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
Commissioner Peterson?
No questions.
Commissioner, is safer, I don't know if it's a, if it's a concern for this meeting, but say, the new Burlington Avenue, the one, like, say, the proposed, what's the existing right-of-way then? Is it, did you say it was 66 feet, or that it would...
Typically, the existing one that runs straight east, if you go to a very old aerial photograph, Burlington used to be a T-intersection at Cass Avenue. So, that 66 feet, I believe it was 66 feet.
Yes.
All right, was, is the existing width of that right-of-way, which is very typical?
Let me see. And it looks like Cass Avenue is also 66 feet, is it? So, would, I just wonder if, I guess, I'm just thinking about, let's say, if anything, if any rights-of-way for Burlington should be, should be increased at all for parking, like, to allow street parking on this future Burlington Avenue, as a way to kind of compensate for the lack of the parking lot, that there might be an opportunity for increased parking on the new Burlington Avenue. I, I'm not offering a solution, but that's just a thought of mine. I don't know if that's applicable to this meeting or not, but I just wonder if, I guess, if Cass Avenue is 66 feet, and it already has parallel parking on both sides, then I guess Burlington, I guess that also, is there any, is there any thoughts on the village, like, side of plant, like, ensuring that there's parallel parking, or any parking on this future Burlington to kind of make up for the lack of parking?
I would say for the purposes of this subdivision, it's not discussed in particular for the road design. Most of those conversations will likely happen when and if a development commences on the property, when they have to come in for site plan approval, is when we likely discuss those type of nuances to the building construction and changes to the roadway there.
Yeah, but, okay. And then, I think you mentioned already that the, is there, which way do the existing utilities run?
It's a mess.
There are a lot of utilities, so there's a, there's a physical water main along East Burlington Avenue, and it goes straight to Cass Avenue. Part of that will be severed as part of the reconfiguration. The biggest complication utility-wise is in the north-south alley between Cass and Linden, and the whole length of the downtown is a very high-voltage commed transmission line underground, and we are intercepting that in the alley, bringing it into the new right-of-way, and back to where it connects, where it goes underneath the railroad. So, that is something that's many years in the making, and it's close, like, maybe this spring. And there's a sanitary sewer that has to be intercepted and brought back to Linden too.
How, I'm curious too, is like, how is the payment, like, who, is it the village that's paying for rerouting the utilities?
The infrastructure improvement, the roadway and everything that has to do with it is a village project at this time.
But it's to the benefit of future development?
It's to make, it's to remove that complexity from the development, but that's not to say that the value to do this isn't built into, you know, an agreement for a developer there. So, it is certainly, you know, in the spreadsheet columns, as far as what the value is, is that what's being contributed in advance.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I see it almost as a rearranging the utilities and things is almost kind of to the benefit of a, of a future development. Okay.
It is, and kind of like my comments regarding the railroad, it runs much more efficiently when the municip- when the municipality is interfacing with the utilities than a developer doing it. And that's why it takes years to get solved. And anyway, that's where we're at. So we're taking advantage of our debt relationship and getting them done in advance.
And then, okay. Thank you.
And thank you. Commissioner Scales.
Just one question, and I wish I could take credit for it, but Commissioner Lavoy brought it up. What about the bus stop? Does that require an easement or does that remain or does that matter in this context?
The bus stop that exists is 100% in the Cass Avenue right of way that isn't changing. Whether or not that changes with, you know, redevelopment is, you know, an excellent topic. It's one of the many pieces of this thing. And, you know, also note that we don't have the service that we used to have pre-COVID. And I actually, it was just yesterday I sat on a, you know, a Metro, you know, presentation, not Metro, but the Pace Bus, you know, about, you know, their 50-year plan, you know, that they're trying to implement. And it doesn't show any enhancements on Cass Avenue. So the shelter itself is owned by Pace and we just allow it to be there.
Okay, so there's no formal easement required for something like?
No easement or, that's in the public right of way and it's totally our independent relationship with Pace to allow it there or not.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. You mentioned earlier, Steve, some, an existing timeline with COMED. Is there an existing timeline for moving that power line?
Well, yes, but, you know, it's changed over three years. So we're the closest we've ever been, actually have a deposit. So I'll just, it's the same COMED story you'll hear from anybody. They're working on it, supply chain problems, this and that. So we have the design, we already paid for the engineering, the design was done two years ago. And they have, they are having the actual construction set plans developed. And they tell us that that's close. So I'm thinking, the reason we're here now is that I want the right of ways in the right place so that they're not waiting on us. Because as soon as we tell them we have to wait for something, then they're gone for another couple of years. So the COMED would be first. The roadway can, you know, be done with a development. It's also designed that could be done in advance if we choose to do so, but right now it's to accommodate Commonwealth Edison.
Well, I hope you have better luck with COMED than I have. Commissioners, any other input questions, staff? In that case, Chair would entertain a motion to approve one under PZC 0322024. First, preliminary plan of subdivision to consolidate six lots, parcels into one lot.
Motion, Scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Motion for Scales, Zakiri, second.
Doug, can we have some discussion if you don't mind?
And discussion, please.
The motion is for a preliminary plat and this document is marked final plat.
That's correct. The final.
Did you think I wasn't going to see that?
No, so the, a lot of times when we have preliminary plans that come through, they have a lot of engineering documents attached to them for those improvements that are required, which in this case, there's variances to those improvements that were normally required, which is usually when you see the thick packet of engineering, the preliminary plan is what that's called. In this case, because of the variance requests, they're not, we're not requiring that to be attached to this. So the preliminary plan is also the final plat in this case, but this commission doesn't see final plats, only the village board does. So it's the same document.
Be revised to say preliminary plat?
It's the same document. We've, yeah, we've done it before with other ones that didn't have the required improvements. Usually it's the park district properties that we've seen it done through. It's just a process thing.
So when it goes to the village board, it will be approval of the preliminary and final.
Correct.
Plata subdivision.
Good point. Further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. And second, the Westmont Land Development Ordinance variance request to delay both the installation, delay both the installation and cash in lieu contribution of required land improvements until, until development of the newly created lot. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Motion and second discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Thank you.
This item will be heard at the December 19th village board, just for anyone listening.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. The first agenda item is PZC 0262024. A request from WY Investments Limited Liability, a company doing business as Westmont Yard for the property of 233 West 63rd Street in Westmont for the following. First, an amended and restated plan development agreement to allow ancillary outdoor uses associated with a daycare center in the C1 Commercial District. And second, an amended site plan and amended landscape plan in the C1 Commercial District. Good evening, sir.
Hello.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, sure. I'm Bill Gust. I own Westmont Yard, WY Investments, built it here almost 15 years ago. So I thought maybe I'd just give you a quick background for people that don't know it. It's Westmont Yard. It's over 233 West 63rd Street. This is the original, kind of, I think, close to the original slide I put up here 15 years ago. But, so we're an indoor sports facility. We've got three turf fields. On those turf fields, we do sports leagues, travel soccer leagues, football leagues, lacrosse, baseball, anything people want to do indoors on a turf field. We also have a daycare that we have grown. We've got, it's a full-service daycare. It's got 10 rooms. And we have an after-school program too. We go to the local schools and pick them up. We do mighty tykes, little kids' classes. We do adult sports leagues. So it's been great. Since, since that time, we've opened up one in Naperville as well as South Milwaukee. So this is just sort of an impact on, on the community. We get about 400,000 visitors. That's probably closer to 500,000 now a year. This one's a little old, just amongst all of our different businesses. So we invest in the community. It's really, it's a local base. We don't do national tournaments or anything like that. We're really just here for the communities, the surrounding communities. And that's where we've built our business around. There's, just want to give you a visual on the different programs. So it's been great. It's been a great time for us here. We really enjoy Westmont and the community. And, oh, that might have been the video. Okay, so active childcare, I think, is what is here today. So we have active childcare, which is, you know, kids from six weeks, you know, babies up till five years, and then they go into our after-school program that goes till about 12 years. In that, we have indoor, what's great about our daycare is in the winter time, they can go on to our indoor fields and play when it's inclement out, but we also have outdoor playgrounds. And I guess why I'm here is I tried to put in a basketball net for our after-school program. And one thing led to another. And so we're here, I think, trying to clarify some of the old PUD documents that we had to make it clear for the outdoor playgrounds that we have. So right now, if you see, the blue is our existing playground. It's temporary. It's in a parking spot, but we put across a fence on the north side and block it off during the day. So the way our parking works is nine months out of the year, we're not that busy. It's in the summertime, people are outside. We run summer camps, but we don't have heavy, our heaviest usage is travel leagues. And that's weeknights during the winter and weekends. So during the day, we block this off. We don't need the parking spots. The kids have a blacktop. They run around. We've got basketball nets there. They play basketball. It's great. So that's temporary. We also, you see a small temporary thing square there just to the south of it. That is a tent that we just put up in the summertime to keep the sun off the kids. And so during summer camps, they go out there for lunch and use it under there. In the back now is the green. Those are permanent. There is a permanent playground on the south side of the building. And then we want to expand that around to the east side. And then on the west side, you can see, we don't have a playground there, but I thought it would be good for the after-school kids because they're located over in that portion of the building to be able to go out there and use that as a playground. So that is, I think, what we're here to do is to, the original documents don't really call this out. You'll get into the details, Scott, I'm sure. One of the things I think that was in the mind was, well, is having these kids outdoors, you know, around here appropriate? And I would just like to mention, to the east of us is a park that has a playground and will always be a park. It's not like it's going to change. And there's a skate park that's now going to be maybe a pickleball. So, I mean, we came to this area because it's recreation oriented. Behind us is a golf course. To the south of us is a giant hill, so nobody can see us. And on the other side of that is a lake. To the west of us is the lake pond, like whatever wraps around. And just across north of that is a daycare with another playground. So we are surrounded by playgrounds and recreational uses. And across the street is a bus depot. So I feel like this all fits into the area. That's why we came to this area is we think it's a good match for it. So that is the site plan of what we're looking for to do out there and I guess get approved. Also with that, I think there was discussion about, we have buses. So we have buses and vans that pick up the kids at the local schools. We go to all the local schools, pick them up. We bring them to our after-school program. They have a snack. They go on the field. They learn a sport. They play a sport. They burn off their energy. They come back. They do their homework. They get picked up. Beautiful program. It involves buses. So you see the green is where we designate parking the buses. And then the blue in the southeast is where we put them on nights and weekends. So again, 90% of the time, our parking lot is fine, so we just leave them in the parking lot. When it gets super busy at nights and on the weekends, we park them over in the south where there's cell towers and just empty space where we get them out of the parking lot. And then finally, I think there was, talk about the landscape plan. So I went through and looked and the green is, everything is exactly to my eye, the same as the, what we said we would do 15 years ago. The blue, poison ivy got into those bushes there. And so when we had somebody rip out the poison ivy, they ripped everything out. So we need to replace that. And I'm suggesting we do that with arbovita because I think it would be nice to get something taller in there just to provide separation between the kids and the road. It's not a super busy road there. It's just to the golf course. But, and then there's a couple on the west side, there were existing trees there that were weeds that were killing, or knocking over the fence. So we took those out. I mean, we can put whatever there, some bushes, and that's fine. And then I think there's a couple other things missing that we need to replace. So that's kind of a summary. I think I'm going to turn it over to Scott. He can give you more details of exactly what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, please.
Thank you, Chair. So this is somewhat convoluted amendment process that happened throughout the original approvals of this. So bear with me as I go through some of the history on what's happened on this property. And then I'll get into the approvals that we're here for today. So the original development was approved back in, back in 2009 with a planned development, as a planned development with a site plan approval, landscape plan approval, waivers to the masonry standards. And the property was originally developed as just the indoor soccer field. At the time, we called that an amusement use. And they received the approval for that use specifically, as it was a special use at the time and still is today. So under, under those ordinances, they allowed an exception at the time for the front of the space where the soccer fields, or where the, sorry, where the parking lot is facing 63rd, there were retail spaces that were originally there that were meant to remain retail until, once they found tenants to move in. But the soccer field was always supposed to be part of the development. Now, fast forward, same year, the planned development originally was never recorded because they asked for an amendment to clarify some of the uses on the property. Also in 2009, just a little bit later in March, the amendment allowed for changes for the materials to change on the architectural design on the site plan itself. And it allowed amendment agreements from the community development director, once they came in for permits for minor changes to the site plan that was originally approved. Fast forward to 2010, the petitioner, Westmont Yard, came in for an amendment for the retail spaces to allow two of the five retail spaces that were originally developed there to be used for some ancillary indoor soccer training spaces because they were having a hard time finding tenants for those spaces. And then in 2015, they came back in for another amendment, amendment number three to the original plan development agreement to turn all five of those retail spaces to expand their permitted childcare use into those spaces as well. All of these were approved at that time.
Can I interrupt? Is that, or no, you're just, I would just like to say, because it feels like a little bit of a bait and switch, but we did try hard on the retail thing. I did put a restaurant in there and that failed miserably. So we did try and I think the, it's set back across the, I'm not a retail guy, I wasn't at the time, but I think it's just with the, the parking lots in front and the retail's not right up front. It's not great the way the building is to do it. And the daycare was doing great. We had five rooms on the east side. And we were, it was, thought that was a great asset to the community. And so that's why we petitioned for the five daycare.
Yeah, I would like to clarify that these amendments were approved by the village board. Those attachments are in your packet for the reasoning to allow those amendments from the original plan development. So going into some of the entitlement requests we're seeing today. So as, as Mr. Gust mentioned already, we originally saw a permit come in for some outdoor uses. And we usually, when we see a permit come to our desk for review for any outdoor use of any kind, we go to our planned development agreement for the property and the site plan we look at. In this case, in the planned development agreement, it wasn't specifically allowed to have these outdoor uses. There were minor uses that were allowed at the time. However, a lot of childcare facilities allow these uses. There's a requirement from the state for them to have outdoor uses associated with childcare and daycare centers. And in the, in the case of this planned development, didn't outright state that they were allowed. So it's difficult for staff to look at any changes to the exterior of the space and the planned development agreement itself. Additionally, the amendments made it a bit more difficult as well. So their first request today is to first amend and restate the planned development agreement. The restating of the planned development agreement basically provides staff with a clearer document to base their approvals on, rather than sifting through a lot of amendments and ordinances to find the correct information. It also clarifies language in the planned development, not just for the benefit of staff, but also the benefit of the property owner and if any new owners come in for transfer of the development. The amendment itself, Gus went over a lot of those changes. Currently, the outdoor area that's used on the blacktop, where the parking spaces are on the south, on the south, sorry, the east side of the property, have historically been utilized for those daycare services. The, on the south end of the property, there was, if you go back a slide for me.
Oh, yeah.
One more, sorry. There we go. On the back end, there is an outdoor facility with a chain-link fence playground. He's looking at trying to expand that a little bit around the corner of the property. And then on the west side of the property is a completely new area that the petitioner is trying, or has come forward to expand outdoor. or has come forward to expand outdoor use for the daycare facilities with fencing and additional landscaping as well. Lastly, was mentioned that the parking spaces were being utilized for the buses and vans. The buses and vans are pretty common with daycare facilities. You can look around. A lot of them in the area, they utilize them for their services for the daycare itself. The original parking plan, when this was approved, was approved with the amount of parking shown here. The, when it originally went through, they did not know the number of retail spaces that were going to be put in here. When you, when we look at parking for developments, you look at the use, not necessarily the land involved. In this case, they didn't know the use of those five vacant spaces that were going to be met, but they knew the use of amusement. And planning and zoning at the time and the village board at the time felt comfortable approving that and submitting the amendments with the childcare facilities. I believe it's 16 spaces that are currently being used or will be used for the buses themselves as a storage area for the buses when they're not in use. And I believe they move when they're at peak tournament times and the soccer field's being utilized more often. The second request here is for that amendment site and landscape plan approval. And I just went over those specifics in there. Additionally, a portion of the property is technically, we believe, based on our engineer's comments, in a wetland. That means for some structures and some type of improvements to the ground itself, he will have to go to the county if he plans on changing it from basically grass to anything else to see if there's any requirements that need to be met through the county's wetland requirements. It would not be through the purview of the village for those requirements, but I just want to state that because our engineer did mention it. I don't know exactly where those lines lie for the wetland or the buffer area, but it's up for the petitioner to make sure that he's compliant with the county requirements.
And I think he mentioned the south side was okay, the west side.
Yeah, that was based, yeah, based on the parcel viewer information. Correct. I'm open for any clarifying questions. If the commission has any questions for the petitioner as well.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board or the commission on this issue? Seeing none, we'll go to the commissioners. Mr. Zakary, will you start?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I had a couple of questions, I guess, about landscape plan and then proposed, I guess, expansion on the two playground areas for, I guess I'll start with the landscape plan. On the, what would that be, the southeast corner where those two trees are, are those still in existence now, or have those already been removed? Because it looks like the fence would wrap around those.
Oh, those two on the west. That's all, yeah, it's hard to, that's the west. I think those are still there. No, they're not there. Oh, what does it say? Replace elsewhere on property. So they.
No, and the.
Oh, sorry, it is on the.
Yeah, so those, I believe, were.
Oh, way down here, the down, he is. Yeah, on that southeast, sorry, okay. The one that says interfered with, no, those are gone.
Yeah, those were originally removed with the construction of the building.
Got it. And then, is that existing chain link fence where you continue to wrap it near the cell towers, is that already in existence today?
Part of it is, yes.
Because I know that it stops at the back end of the building. I only know this because I know, I know the back area and really the whole building. Like the back of my hand. Because it's just, it's calling out that it exists today, like as it extends out past the end of the building?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. And I apologize. The green is something that's there all the time. The blue is temporary. I should have done, but there's nothing that shows what's there and not there, which I should have done. So you are correct. The green narrow part along the south side of the building exists today. The green on the east side does not exist.
Got it. Okay, so then the plan is to then continue a six-foot fence past the four-foot fence? As you.
Oh, no, I think it would still be a four-foot fence. I think that existing six-foot is the chain link fence of the cell tower. So, sorry, there are existing chain links around the cell tower.
Right.
So I would just do a little, so, yeah, part of that green would be.
And then is there a plan, because I know that area was recently cleared out over there. Like, is the plan to regrade it? Because I know it's like, it's a pretty steep hill for a playground back there.
We're going to be on the flat part. You are, there's a steep hill, but that's not where we plan to put the.
It looks like it's extending all the way out, is all I'm saying. You know, it looks like it would extend, if it's extending all the way out to the fence of the cell tower, I'm familiar with the space. I'm just wondering, you know, if it's going to be a playground for, you know, back there as, you know, two and under typically, two-year-olds?
Yeah, no, I think they want, she wants to do this for the two- to four-year-olds. So the one in the back that is existing is more of the toddlers. And so we want to put one in for the two-to-five-year-olds.
That's what, that's what this one would be.
Yes. So, yes, we would, for whatever is there, we would grade that out and put in a play structure.
Okay, is that, that's the plan for playground? Would, when you say playground, just put in like a swing set type?
Yeah, 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 I get it. Sorry.
Dan, I was, if you could switch to the overhead.
Oh, can I put, we still got that fancy thing I can put in there? Cool. I didn't want, I wasn't sure where to put this, because I'm not, but this is what we were thinking. Like, something like that.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, okay. Well, there's no swings, so you should have enough room.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you would definitely need to regrade that area to put that in there.
I just saw you were talking about that steep hill we're not going to touch, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it kind of abuts next to that cell tower. And then for the other new play area, is that, is that just on, is the ground just asphalt, concrete?
That's grass. I was just going to leave it grass. I just was like, oh, it'd be fun for the kids on nice days to go out there and kick a soccer ball.
Yeah, not familiar with that side of the building, so I wasn't sure. Because it looks like it comes out to the parking lot almost.
Correct, yes. It does. Well, the way I have it drawn, it does, yes.
Yeah. Because that would, that area would definitely be asphalt, right?
Yeah, but I stop it at the grass. Everything in the green is grass. Because the parking lot, it's got that, well, the storage area is there, and then there's, well, whatever. You sure do know the building. Thank you for participating.
Yeah, I know it all too well. I think I'm good for right now, question-wise.
Mr. Thomas?
I think you're in a perfect spot, like you said, for daycare and kids and that. And you have the room for your expansion, in my opinion. And kids enjoy it there. When I was there looking over the area, no one had to be dragged by their parents into the facility. They were way ahead of their parents and hitting the button and going.
Oh, they love that damn button. I can't tell you how many times we have to get that fixed. We tell them, you're only allowed to cry when you leave. That's from the kids.
When you're giving them back to the parents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you.
Just curious, all the, when the buses pick up the kids at the schools, is it the schools just in Westmont? Or is it in other areas?
No, it's in other areas, because darn, we're like four blocks from Darian and four blocks, you know, we're right on the edge of Westmont. So, yeah, we go to, I think we go to 15 schools or something. But a lot of it is Westmont, you know, the bulk of our.
And how many buses and vans does Westmont have?
Yeah, I think we have anywhere, well, we did 16 spots, but I think one takes up two. I think that we have 14 right now.
And I think a question for Scott, like if, if we approve this, and then if bill goes to the county for stuff, could that interfere with us, what we approve?
If there's substantial changes, he may have to come back in if he can't specifically do what he wants to because of county requirements.
Oh, okay.
However, generally, the county, you'd have to, they do pre-application meetings at the county, so he would know that prior to, so.
But the, did you, the county only has jurisdiction in regards to a wetland.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the south, we think is fine. We just, that was just a guy looking at it.
It's, the way it's stated from our engineer is basically, you need to check to make sure with the county, we don't do it for you.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So it's potentially, it might just be the west side. And even there, I'm just putting in a fence, but who knows?
Okay, I have no other questions.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Lit?
Let me see. It was like, anyway, we, as my family, we enjoyed your facility. I'll admit, we were part of the mighty Tykes.
Oh, did they? I hope they enjoyed.
Yeah, they did. I didn't, I don't, I don't, as, I don't specifically, we didn't go out on the exterior very much. There was, there was, it was a good few years ago that we were looking for daycare centers, and we did visit, and we did take a look at your outdoor area. I just, I just remember thinking that the interior of the building was very impressive, like what you have, like for the interior. But I remember looking at the exterior and thinking this, that I remember wishing that more attention was kind of, like was put to the exterior for the, for the, kind of the quality of construction and facilities for the kiddos.
Oh, okay.
So that still stands out in my mind. So I do, I do like that you're approving it. Like, I almost want to visit again, but just that, I do remember, and Commissioner Zakary touched on it, was, I just remember thinking that the things were not very level and that I thought it was very tight. And is it, is it at the back? Is it at the, I'm wondering if I had seen the east end of your building or even around to the south. Do you currently use the south end of the building for?
Yes, yeah. And almost nobody goes back there, because it's very protected because there's the hill there, so.
Right. I thought, I mean, I know I'm kind of speaking outside of our scope, but it was just, I just remember thinking that the lighting, the setup, the width of the area, it all, everything kind of, it struck me as just like an afterthought of like the, so I'm happy to hear that you're putting more attention to it. And, yeah, I hope that, yeah, you can bring it up to like a really high and nice quality to kind of match how impressive the interior of your building is.
Oh, thank you, yes, yeah.
Those are, I know I probably put a lot of personal thoughts into there and kind of family experiences, but much of my concern is just maybe just the quality and the standard of the finishes and stuff and the lighting and whatnot you put in, and maybe even the type of fencing that you incorporate into the design. I hope it's not, I hope it isn't, I hope it gets rid of the afterthought type of feeling that I had at first.
Okay, for the outside, thank you, yeah.
Please don't take offense.
No, 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 that's fine. We put a lot in. We just moved earlier this year, last year, to LED lighting. And thanks to you guys, if you were to help at all, but we just finished solar panels all on the roof. So we've got, I don't know, a few hundred solar panels up there that's going to take care. Between the LED and the solar panels, I think 95% of our needs, electric needs. So we continue to invest in it, in the building, and I'm with you. We need to, the next project is to get the outside.
Mr. Scales?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation and congrats on 15 years of.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
A couple of the questions have already been asked. One I kind of had left over, and you touched on it a little bit, is the stormwater and whether or not it's within the buffer of the nearby wetland, the adjacent wetland? So is that an issue or not?
So it's not technically an issue for our purposes. It's just a requirement through the county that if he's within a certain area near the wetland, if he proposes certain changes to the ground itself, the earth, it could cause some issues through the county. He'd probably have to get permits through the county. It's just a comment from our engineer that he knew about the wetland in that area.
But it's nothing that would prevent our advisement today?
It depends on what is used and where that buffer area lies. Our staff, yeah, our staff doesn't look specifically at it until a permit comes through for anything. The, it's up to the property owner to make sure they're within the county regulations.
It's not uncommon to, for this commission and for the village board, to approve a development subject to final engineering. And if something happens, God forbid, during final engineering where design plans have to change, as Scott mentioned earlier, it's probably going to have to come back to you.
For example, when this was originally approved, their detention wasn't underground. When it came back in for permits, it ended up being underground, so.
Is that what that is, a detention pond for the?
No, the detention pond in the back is for the condos and I think it's townhouses on the other side in the residential area. There may be some agreement between the two, but.
Believe me, I, like, we could put like a 20-foot pipe and use it, no, I don't know.
So is that a naturally occurring wetland, then, that's?
No, I believe it was constructed for the apartment condos that are over there.
Got it. And I'm asking because obviously I want you to be successful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. And one, you did mention stormwater. We don't, we plan to keep all the, this playground pervies. So we're not putting anything down. So it shouldn't affect stormwater. I think it's just flood plain.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Got it.
Like, the west, the west side, I'd just leave it grass, and the other one, we'll just put wood chips down. You got to have wood chips because there's, if we put in the play structure.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Village Attorney Azemnac, do you have comments?
Boy, I get to go in front of Mr. Lavoy. Bill, nice to see you again. It's been a while.
Yeah, yeah, it has been.
A few questions about the bus parking. We have in the draft agreement that it's limited to 16 buses.
Yes.
I think you said you have 14 currently, so you're okay with that limit. Your write-up described it as buses and vans.
Correct.
And when I've driven by the property, I think I've only seen buses. Do you actually have vans?
We do have four or five vans, yeah. But they might be out at Naperville. I apologize. I could check.
So it's 16 total combined buses and vans?
Yeah, and it could be all buses. I didn't mean to, I just, or it might, if it's buses today, it might be vans tomorrow, if that's.
Okay.
Like, we got three facilities and we change them.
Yeah, and so that was one of the.
Like, in COVID, we couldn't buy any more buses. We had to, like, you just can't, they quadrupled in price. It was crazy.
There's a requirement in the draft amended and restated planned development agreement that the buses have to be labeled with Westmont Yard or labeled with the name of the childcare center.
Okay.
And in driving by, I've seen buses with Westmont Yard on them.
Yes.
But I've also seen Naperville Yard.
Yes, because we change them. But they still have active child, they all have active childcare on them, right? I didn't mean to.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Okay.
They all have that, and they all have after-school sports. But you're right, some of them, I mean, if we borrow a bus from Naperville.
Okay, so you have buses at your Naperville location that are stored at Naperville, but sometimes they're interchanged?
Yes.
So I guess what I was trying to prevent in the wording of the agreement was that this doesn't become a storage facility for Naperville Yard's buses because you're not allowed to park them there?
No. If anything, it would be the opposite.
Okay.
We'd move stuff out to Naperville. But we don't, we don't, we don't do that, but.
Are the buses, I'm sorry, I should ask this question. The after-school program that you run?
Yes.
Is that part of the childcare use, or is that a separate program run by Westmont Yard?
In what context do you mean?
Who runs the after-school program?
We do. So we own both programs and run both.
I understand active, Westmont Yard Corp. does business as Active Child as a licensed daycare center.
Yes.
The after-school program, is that run by Westmont Corp. doing business as Active Child Center where it's part of the daycare use? Or is that a, unrelated to the daycare use, another program that Westmont Yard Corp. operates?
Man, I hate, legal question. Man, I hate, legal question here. Okay, so I don't think we have a DBA as after-school sports. So I think we run it in conjunction with Active Child Care.
Okay.
Um, but I don't think for the DBA, I mean, it's just a checking account, right? I don't, there's not too much to a DBA. Like, that's not really a big legal standing, is it?
No, I, I guess what I.
I don't have an LLC called Active Child Care. I don't, I, it's just, we just put on their DBA, like, that's our brand name for it. But it's own, the only corporate entity is Westmont Yard Corp.
And I just wanted to make sure that the agreement didn't unduly restrict the use, you have a new playground that you're proposing on the west side.
Yes.
If that's something that your after-school program is going to utilize, the kids are going to utilize that playground area?
Yes. Yes.
Um, if it's not, I, I don't want to restrict it, that playground use just to the daycare use if the after-school program is unrelated to the licensed daycare operations. So I, I guess I can just word that a little more broadly that it.
Okay, I'm not trying to be coy. I just don't, you know, I know you're asking a, I'm not sure there's any fine legal term between the two. Well, there's no LLC set up for either of them. There's no separate legal entity. Um, but, and, but we do have that, you're right, DBA is Active Child Care. I've never done a DBA as act, after-school sports. I don't, I don't know why. Um, and then, but the, the one is licensed by the state and the other is not licensed by the state. So I, I don't know if that helps, but.
And the buses are used for both the daycare use and the after-school program use?
Yeah, I guess you're right, yes. I mean, 95% is the after-school use, but I think, yeah, for half-day kindergarten, we, we do use them for both, yes.
Okay. Um, and just for the commission's benefit, it is a requirement of the state that in order to license a daycare facility, they have to have, uh, outdoor playground area for children. So that's why this was installed, even though it wasn't mentioned in the original approvals. It was because it was a state mandate. The village can't trump that with its own regulations. And if you look at other daycare uses, other daycare centers throughout the village, they have an outdoor playground use. So it's kind of inherent when the village in the zoning ordinance says daycare centers are permitted use, that that necessarily includes an accessory outdoor playground component. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Did that take some of your questions away, Chris?
Uh, one or two, but I have a lot more.
Commissioner Lavoy, you're up.
Uh, yeah, thank you for the presentation. They're about the plat, I might need help. There's Scott.
You what?
I said if they're about the plat, I might need Scott's help.
Uh, well, actually, there is a question there, and that is, uh, I'll start with that then. And that is, that there's an existing driveway back there to access to towers.
Correct.
Do you have rights to that?
Well, it's on the, on our property, so.
It's on your, so, so the easement back there for those cell towers are only for the fenced-in areas for the cell tower, correct?
Easement for, yes. Well, no, they also have an easement to access the.
But it's not, you can still use it as a property owner, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Because you, you know, you, you depend on that access to circulate.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, we don't, unfortunately. That, the, the parking lot is not, can, oh, it is through a gate, you're right. But no, that gate's shut most of the time.
So that gate is shut?
Yeah, sorry. It's shut most of the time. So no, no customers go out that other way.
Okay. Um, how many doorways to the, to the building are there to the, the playground to the south?
Uh, there would be one door they go, oh, well, they're, yeah, one, just one.
Show's only one, right?
Yes.
And then, uh, on the west side, there's only one?
Yeah. I'm depending on how long we made the pla, the way I depicted it, there's just one. If you, we extended, there's two more doors on the west side.
Okay.
But yeah, I think just one, yes.
Um, and are there kids out there after dark? Do we need to light this playground at all, or?
No.
No.
No, we don't, no. I'll confirm that, which is it. But no, they don't go out in the dark, because we have our indoor playgrounds.
I get that. I just don't, don't know your operations, so I'm asking.
Yeah, 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 no, we don't go out during the dark.
Because what I'm really leading up to is, um, emergency services. If we have an incident back there, how does fire get there with the kids back there?
Okay.
So that's something that I have a concern about, that if we have, how many kids could be in that playground? Because fire can't access that playground from the south. They can't access only from the cell tower. Or do you have a, another gate there that, uh, you could put on that fence so fire, if they had to get in there, they could get in there?
Well, they could get back close to it. I mean, they, through the, they can come through the gate to the cell tower area.
To the cell tower area, but I'm talking about from where they would park, uh, a rig there to get to the kids.
Uh-huh.
Can they get to the kids?
Oh, yeah, yes, we will have a gate through the fence, yeah.
That's what I'm asking. Sorry. There's no, there's no detail of that, so I want to make sure that police and fire can get to the kids if there's an incident back there.
Fair, yeah.
So if one of the kids goes down and, and the ambulance needs to get there, they need, they're going to bring a fire truck and an ambulance there and they need to get back there.
Yeah.
But I, you know, with the information that I have, I can't tell if they have that clear path.
Yep. We, yes, we will have a gate.
So that won't be blocked off?
Well, there'll be a gate and a fence, which is, yeah.
Could staff work on that, uh, for emergency services? Would you run that by fire?
So we do have some language related to, um, where their fire hydrant currently is located for, to require that, um, the fire emergency service can get back, um, by a movable gate.
Yeah, we need to have them.
It's in the PD agreement, uh, as reinstated and amended currently in the draft.
It is. One of the, so that the playground on the east side of the building is blocked off by a temporary fence. They've removed that temporary fence.
Yeah, I get that part. I'm, I'm more concerned, John, about the, the rear playground area that is blocked off by cell towers.
On the south.
And you can't get to it. So fire can't get there.
It would be challenging to get back there, for sure.
And with only one door access to inside the building. So that's my concern. So is there something, some sort of gate or point of, of emergency services to get in and out of, off of, off of Green Meadows Drive to get to the kids if there's an incident?
Can I, how, how is it different than if a kid gets hurt inside the building?
Um.
Sorry, I'm not an expert.
If a kid gets inside the building, maybe some fire are going to pull up to the front of the building and come through.
Well, they can't get within 200 feet of them. The kid's, let's say, is in the backfield. Like, they're going to have to take a stretcher and go in.
So they have to go in and then they come through the door? I just want to, you know.
I'm just so, I'm the same thing. They're going to pull up by the cell tower and they're, they're going to take a stretcher and walk on, you know, 50 feet and get them. I, I, I'm not an emergency guy, but I don't.
Time, time is probably of the essence.
Well, but what, okay, so I got, I got somebody that's hurt on, on the backfield. It happens all the time. They, they can't drive a van in to get them. They got to drive to the front door.
They drive to the front.
Walk 300 feet.
Okay, that's why I asked you about the door.
Okay. They could, yeah, they could go through the door, but I, they can drive right up. I would, this thing would be easier just driving to the cell tower.
That's the answer to the question. If they could drive up and walk across there unimpeded by a fence or obstruction.
Well, there'll be a gate. They'll have to go through a gate in the fence. Like, I, I have to have a, that, every playground.
There would be a gate there.
Yeah.
But you could provide a gate so they could walk through there in an emergency and get to a kid, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's the answer.
Okay, sorry. All right.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about, is making sure that if we have a stack of kids back there and we have something, just because of the configuration, it's a long and narrow piece and you can't get there from the west, you can't get there from the south. You can, you can only get there from that drive and then you have the cell towers that are there. So I want to make sure that, hey, if there could be a gate there for sure, that now they can get there from the inside or the outside.
Yeah.
But they can get, uh, to kids out there. How wide is that, by the way? It's not shown anywhere. It's not that wide. It's only 12 feet wide. So anyway, yes, I would, I would suggest during the staff review, the improvements to run it by fire.
We did send this to review for fire. Um, that's why some of the language that you mentioned earlier was added, um, but we can certainly clarify the language.
Uh, you have any, any, um, occasion to, uh, use that field across the driveway, like in the park, the park district?
Oh, we do, yeah. We, um, we work at the park district. We rent the, there's the big field. We don't use that too often. But next to it is a detention area field that rarely ever has one. And we rent that for the summer, so we have our summer camps out there.
I see.
Yeah.
And I believe there's a gate.
Yes.
Right out there to, directly to, so they don't have to go around.
That's correct.
On 63rd.
Yes. So you come right out the concessions door, it's in the blue area, and they walk across the, our closed parking lot and then out a gate?
Okay. The other fence to, the other, uh, green area where you have decorative fence, uh, would there be a gate to the parking lot there for emergency services or?
I guess we could if you wanted it. Like, I, I, my, my incident would have been, no, just because why?
Well, this is site plan review and it's something that, it hasn't come up yet. And that's kind of why we vet these things.
I guess, see, I always just think, why let somebody get in from over there, like, you know, bad people or whatever. But we can put a gate there and that, there's, that's easy.
Uh, I know there's downsides to, you know, having a gate there, but also if a kid is down, they want to get there quick.
Sure.
And they don't want to be routed all, you know, around the building. The player is different than in the building, so.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea anyways. I, I, sorry, I hadn't thought it through. It's a great point. We probably have a gate there anyways, because parents will come and pick up all their kids out there and they're not going to want to walk all the way through the building.
The whole concept on me is, is there's lo, long, narrow areas that have limited access and we're going to have little ones out there.
Yeah.
And.
I think it's great, your perspective, because for me, the south one is like the safest playground. There's no roads near it. There's a big hill. Nobody can see them. They, like, it's just safe, you know? There's a wall on one side, but, you know, I, I see your perspective, right?
I have no other questions.
All right, thank you. Hey, commissioners, last chance. Anybody else want to weigh in? Seeing nothing, the chair would entertain a motion to approve under public hearing PCC 0262024. First, amended and restated plan development agreement to allow ancillary outdoor uses associated with the daycare center in the C1 Commercial District.
Motion, Scales.
Second, Thomas. Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. And second, an amended site plan and amended landscape plan in the C1 Commercial District.
Motion, Scales.
Do I have a second? Second, Thomas. Motion second. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. So there you have it, sir.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
We're looking at the January 9th.
Jan 9th, okay, perfect. Okay, all right, so we'll be.
We'll discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for all you were saying, and Adam too.
Certainly. Good night. Next agenda item under public hearing PCC 0272024 is a request from Bug Wilder Studios Limited doing businesses post-net for the property of 36 North Cass for the following. A special use permit to operate a retail copy shop in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy holidays, everybody. Um, so I'm here looking for, uh, to change the business that I currently have in the building I own on, uh, North Cass Avenue.
In your name, sir?
I'm Joe Jovanovic. Um, I've been, um, a resident of Westmont for 15 years, running my business out of 36 North Cass Avenue for 13 of those years. And, um, uh, enjoy the town and, and want to continue, um, running a business. I currently am a commercial photographer. The business has been changing quite a bit, um, along with, with, uh, my, my ability to physically do all the work. So I'm looking to change the business to, uh, buy a franchise where I can get, uh, some, some help and, um, have a long-running established, uh, business into the future. I've got some background in, in, uh, the Postnet franchise is a, is a, uh, pack and ship business along with a copy shop kind of a business serving consumers and businesses. And so I've got a little bit of that background and it's, uh, it should be a pretty simple transition for me. The, um, the, the franchise itself has about 235 different, uh, locations around the country. There's a location in Shorewood and a location in Lake Forest. Both of those businesses have over two decades of history at those locations. So I'm confident, excuse me, that this is a, a positive business model. Um, my preliminary talks with the franchise about the location. Very, very positive. They're very, very anxious to see, uh, another location in the, in the western suburbs. One of the reasons I'm choosing this business is because they've got a high community focus, uh, for involvement. The business operates best when the community is aware of the business. So a lot of participation with things like the car show and, um, other activities that the chamber sponsors, special events committees and, um, neighboring, neighboring cities being able to bring business from those towns, through those community kind of connections. Again, it's all the standard stuff you'd think of with, um, a mailbox store or a copy shop or a pack and ship store. They offer, uh, add-on segments to the business so that we can also have a notary. We can have fingerprinting services. We can have shredding services. And the franchise is pretty open to allowing the community to kind of determine the exact focus of, um, uh, what you can, uh, specialize in. So if the community is, uh, the business community is, uh, very focused on the shipping aspect of things, then we can put more services in towards those kinds of things. If it's about promotional items, printing up uniforms and T-shirts and things, uh, we have the ability to outsource those things or bring those services in. And so, uh, looking forward to just kind of getting started and seeing what, what makes the most sense, um, for this location. Hours operation, again, the franchise is pretty flexible with allowing, uh, each location to pick their own hours. Initially, I'm thinking 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday. But if there seems to be a need for people wanting to do stuff on the way to work, we can move those hours up earlier, stay later. Um, uh, right now, I'm, I'm hoping I don't have to work on Sundays, but if there's a big demand for that, we can find staff to, to expand into that, uh, full week. Not knowing how busy we could be, the initial idea is that it's, uh, two employees. I've got a, a friend of mine who's slated to be like the, the location manager, uh, running day-to-day operations, um, allowing me to spend time in the shop and then also go out to do sales, uh, make those community points of contact. And, uh, part-time help is needed. Um, uh, the, I'm, I'm hoping that if we can get this approved, that I can then also put some effort into redoing the facade of the building. Part of the purchase of the franchise is a new, new signage, um, but I would like to address the, the dated, um, I don't want to call it dilapidated because it still looks pretty okay, but it needs, uh, it needs some attention and some love, so, um, looking forward to being able to, to upgrade the facade of the building. So parking, um, the village was kind enough to put a beautiful, beautiful parking spot, the, uh, parking lot behind my building. So I have, uh, no concerns about, uh, retail traffic. With the new, uh, franchise, we would dress up the back of the building and make that an actual entrance, uh, to allow people to not have to walk around, uh, be able to come through the shop if, if need be. Um, I've got a large lot for the size of my, uh, footprint of my building. And, uh, when Scott originally said, well, what's your plan for the parking lot, I, I told him that, I told him my plan is, as always, is to be in compliance. Whatever the new rules are, uh, when I first, uh, moved into the neighborhood, uh, 15 years ago, there were, there were rules and we figured out how to make all that work. And so there are questions about trying to improve the parking lot and what the county needs, what the village wants, what is, makes sense. So right now, the initial idea is that, uh, parallel parking, I can get three or four cars in the back without a problem, uh, for employees. But with the large, uh, parking lot behind us, that opens up some possibilities. And, um, uh, looking to just get everything to work their way. It, it's going to work best for everybody. to work their way, it, it's going to work best for everybody. Looking forward to talking with the, uh, the people that own the, what's supposed to be the Bay Creek next door to me, if there's a way to incorporate space for deliveries and delivery vehicles to make that work together in tandem, happy to do that, but again, as plans proceed, just wanting to make sure I get everything taken care of the way everybody else wants it, so. As far as the interior of the, the PostNet locations, they tend to be, uh, just big, open floor plans, there's no back rooms, uh, in, in doing my research about this business and visiting other copy shops and other printing businesses, I was just decimated to my soul because the process has changed since I was in high school working in a print shop, there's no more ink, there's no more chemicals, uh, uh, it's, um, a very clean process, and so the printers are out in the open at these places, the wide-format printers, everything is accessible, so, uh, there shouldn't be any construction needs outside of maybe moving some electrical around to accommodate outlets in locations. One of the things the franchise offers is, is rental mailboxes, uh, so there'll be a, a bank of, uh, private mailboxes for businesses and individuals to be able to gain access to. Um, it is not a requirement of the franchise to, to have that be accessible, uh, 24/7, that can just be accessible during business hours, which is my preference, um, and, um, the floor plan, um, the floor plan will come, uh, as designed by the franchise, once I purchase a franchise, they put their people on my property, and they look at what I've got as far as the layout goes and what the, where the infrastructure is. The, this is my kind of proposal, the only requirement is a bank of mailboxes, they'll need to be up against a wall, and they need, their, their signature is a very large customer service counter, but exactly where that would be located, I, this is my proposal, but this gives, this gives plenty of space for some retail up front, the mailbox area up front, and then, uh, half the space can be designated, the, one side can be designated for shipping and packing, and the other side for the printing business, allowing for kind of a straight flow of people from the back door to the front door. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Adam, you're going to cover this one.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So yes, 36 North Cass Avenue is Zoned B1, and is a part of the village's downtown, near the intersections of Cass Avenue and Irvin Street. As the petitioner mentioned, this is a mixed-use building currently with a photography studio and hair salon on the ground floor, and then a residence upstairs. The zoning ordinance does not have a direct definition for a business like PostNet, so after a discussion amongst staff and with the village attorney, uh, we determined that retail copy shop is the best classification for it, and the zoning ordinance defines retail copy shops as shops which provide copying, blueprinting, and related services, and retail sales to individuals and businesses. So this is different from, uh, commercial copy business, because a retail copy shop offers more small-scale services, where the commercial copy business does larger, higher-intensity uses like printing books and newspapers, so, different than what's being proposed today. Uh, in the B1 district, retail copy shops are special uses, and have one special condition, being that the use may be approved administratively if the space is 1,000 square feet or less. Uh, the floor plan shows that PostNet will occupy about 1,350 square feet of space, so it is not eligible for administrative approval, which is why we are before you tonight. And as the petitioner, petitioner explained, PostNet offers, offers a wide variety of services, including printing, graphic design, shipping, packaging, mailing, notary services, among others. And the petitioner's, uh, parking vehicle plan also shows that there will be parking required, or provided in the back of the space off the gravel lot accessed by the alley. This property is Zoned B1, so there is not a formal parking requirement, typically this use would be required to provide two spaces just for the PostNet, and two spaces for the, um, doing it upstairs, so the four spaces provided wouldn't meet the requirement, although there really isn't one in the B1. And also the delivery vehicles, as shown, will be doing their loading and unloading, um, in the rear of the building as well. And the petitioner, as mentioned, also in their presentation, has updated their hours to be Monday through Friday from eight AM to six PM, and Saturday from nine AM to three PM, with three employees to start. And the findings of fact have been provided for you, I'm happy to go over them if needed, and if not, that's all for staff.
Thank you very much.
I got one thing to add, sorry. Uh, you may have heard, uh, some potential improvements to the property, the site itself and the exterior, uh, some of those would likely have to go through site plan approval. Um, there's nothing proposed currently for improvements, it's a gravel lot in the back. He mentioned some other items, like the DIP program that he's requesting, that is not for tonight, he would likely have to come back for that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone in the public like to, uh, address this issue? Seeing none, we'll go to the commissioners, and, uh, see, Commissioner Thomas, would you start?
My question is about the mailboxes?
Yes, sir.
That's, somebody comes in, orders something printed, and you guys do the printing, you put that, your end product in the mailboxes, they come pick it up, or?
No, the, the mailboxes are...
What's the purpose of them?
Yeah, the mailboxes are, uh, uh, what would typically be called a PO box, but PO boxes reserved only for the post office. So these are, uh, mailboxes to be used, uh, for, uh, by private individuals and businesses who wish to have a, uh, mailing address not, uh, connected to their residence. So, um, uh, whether it's a, a private individual who works his CPA business out of his house, he wants to have a business address to receive correspondence and packages, but doesn't want his home address i- in use, um, and so this is something you'll see at, uh, the UPS store and, um, uh, other, other pack-and-ship kind of places, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a typical service.
Mr. Peterson?
I have no questions or comments.
Uh, I had one question, I know it's not my turn, but, uh, on, uh...
Sounds like it's your turn.
I was wondering if customer access, uh, from the rear of the building, and I was glad to hear that, uh, you're going to make that possible.
Yeah, that, that just makes sense, and, uh, again, it's, uh, I'm a little ahead of the process, I haven't purchased the franchise, uh, the, the, I've been in, in talks with them, I've been out for their discovery day, um, I'm kind of waiting for final approval before I buy something that I, I want to make sure I can put it in there, in the space. But that would be, uh, a, a big plus for us, is to be able to have people not rely on trying to find parking on Cass Avenue, um, it's, it hasn't, it's nothing that the salon customers who currently, uh, come to the space or any of my clients, nobody ever complains or comments about not being able to find parking, but, yeah, being able to utilize that lot and just have people come straight in the back makes perfect sense, so.
Commissioner Lynn?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any comments, I, I think it'd be a nice addition to the town.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
And Commissioner Scales?
Yep, uh, thank you, uh, for the presentation, appreciate it, uh, I like that you're evolving the business, and I'm sure I will utilize it. I just have a couple of quick questions, so, you mentioned it, our staff mentioned it, would there be any facade?
I'm sorry?
Uh, to the front of the building, uh, PostNet signage or anything like that that comes later, or?
Yeah, so, again, like, I'm, it's nothing I've, I've decided on, and I'm, I'm trying to get it to, to, to fit whatever else, compliance is, is what I'm, I'm all about. So, um, if we can, uh, if the business is approved ultimately, and we start these improvements, I've, I've, I've talked with the, the, uh, the village about the DIP program, and what it can cover, and what it would, how it will apply, I've got a contractor, uh, in talks, we've looked at the front, we've looked at the side, we've looked at the, the logistics of, um, re-bricking the front versus painting it, and, uh, there's an awning, there's a wood frame awning on the front of the building now that covers up the, um, that covers up these upper windows, um, so, the, the dream would be to, to, to get a grant, work on the facade, um, there's room for this sign currently on the building, um, but, it's just one of those things where, you know, horse and cart and what have you, so this is the, this is the dream desire, if I can get everything in place and what have you, I do have the funds to, to contribute to the facade.
So from a public-facing brand perspective, they would say PostNet on the front, I mean, people would know that it's a PostNet facility.
This, yeah, this, that's the branded...
And you're completely, uh, rebo, or changing the business over from what it is currently, so the signage, everything changes?
Completely, yes. There's no current signage on the, uh, there's only window signage now.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and this is for staff, I read this a couple of times, I'm still trying to understand why this requires a special use.
So in our current code, we have, um, this is listed specifically, we, there's two rows, uh, one for the B1, one for the B2, uh, there are permitted uses, they're allowed in the downtown outright, where they wouldn't have to come in and ask for approval. Likely when this code was created back in the seventies, it was listed that, um, as Joe mentioned, the chemical-esque uses likely cause us to be a special use, is my best guess.
Makes some sense, okay.
So, that's probably why it is, but currently in our code, um, it is still listed as special use, so they have to come in for the approval. Again, if it was, if the space was less than 1,000 square feet, we would have administrative processes to approve it, um, but it is above that limit, so we don't have that, um, ability at the staff level.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious of the rationale behind it.
Can I, can I speak to that? I'm only speaking to the, uh, observation of the code that staff has inherited, um, which is part of the reason why we're looking at zoning ordinance amendments?
Sure.
Um, in a more comprehensive way, but generally, a lot more of the service uses in our downtown are, are closer scrutinized, I think, because over time, there has always been the preference that there's more retail and restaurant uses. So, um, staff has found that this type of special use might, may not necessarily generate some of those other typical special use things, such as traffic and congestion, or altering the character of the neighborhood type things, but it looks like our, our predecessors, because of the hypersensitivity to the service uses in the downtown, tended to kind of cordon off a lot more service uses as special uses.
Thanks, Dennis, that's helpful, I appreciate that, thank you, that's all I have.
Rachel Lavoy?
Uh, do you have a picture of the front elevation?
Uh, Dennis, can you pull up the PowerPoint? I don't think we have a, one of the current, uh, front facade, unless it's just in the street view. On the page two of your staff report, there's one from Google Street View.
So the, the use upstairs is going to remain the way it is?
Yes.
And those, uh, how many units are up there?
It's a one single unit.
One single unit?
Yeah.
It's occupied now?
By myself, yeah.
Oh, you're up there, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not certain if I'm always at work or never at home, but that's where I go to sleep, yeah.
That's why you're putting the mailboxes in.
Well, trust me, the, the mailboxes are going to solve all sorts of mail problems, yeah.
Okay, do you have delivery services?
So that's not part of the PostNet, um, uh, offerings, uh, if, if there was a demand for that sort of a thing, we, I would look into it, um, uh, generally speaking, it's, uh, the destination, it's, it's, uh, so the PostNet operates, uh, with contracts with UPS, FedEx, DHL, and, and the post office, so, um, it's, it's, again, it's like a UPS store with expanded offerings, um, so...
Okay, well, there's a reason why I ask, and I'm leading up to other questions.
Oh, sure.
So, I, you know, I, I frequent the, uh, UPS store up at Jewel on, on Ogden quite a bit, and what happens there, and just because of that configuration, is people just pull up into the fire lane, including the UPS trucks, uh, you know, they'll just pull up with their flashes on, run in, and the, what, your business, that, how do we prevent that from happening on Cass?
I, 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 I have no idea how to, uh...
Are we basically saying that we designate the rear area as, you know, you just basically educate your, your suppliers, if you will, the carriers to access the back?
Sure, so, yes, as, as, uh, when, and one of the questions I was expecting was, you know, how many trucks do you anticipate a day?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all based on business volume and...
Yes.
...routines and what have you, and I have no clue as to what that might be.
Okay.
Um, so, my, I would anticipate that the drivers on those routes, uh, once, once we're established as, as an account where we're receiving packages for multiple, multiple people, um, that, that would become the routine, that the drivers know this is the place to go, because it's less of a problem, there's no danger of getting clipped by a car on Cass Avenue, and, uh, simply educating the drivers that if they come through the front doors, to tell them to just pull around back. Um, yeah, so, any...
People would do that, too, like, if there's a space available, they'll pull it off at Cass.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, if there's a space available, but I don't, I don't, uh, anticipate any traffic issues with double parking, or people take, you know...
See, all these, all my questions are tied together, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if there was like three units upstairs or not, and where do they park, and how do, how does the access work, I know you got a front door there for the upstairs?
Yes.
But how do, how does that all work, and, and I'm getting clarity on it through these questions, so, uh, delivery could come from the back, but actually, a delivery service from your end would minimize people actually coming to you, they could actually send you stuff electronically, and stuff could get delivered. But anyway, if that's not your business model, doesn't, it's not part of this approval, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the idea is that if, if as a courtesy or as a, as an add-on service, if, if you have a business in Clarendon Hills, and I've got a project for you, y- yeah, we could, we could run out and, and deliver those things if that si, if that lends itself to the, to the...
All right, very good, I have no other questions.
Yeah.
Mr. Commissioners Zakiri?
Thank you, no questions here.
Really? Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, then, uh, under public hearing, excuse me, under par, public hearing PCC 0272024, special use permit to operate a retail copy shop in the B1 limited business district, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Scales, Zakiri, motion second. I have motion and second, discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Lynn?
Uh, I, yes, proof.
Yes?
Right, yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes no, and Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much, and let me just add, the, the, actually, I'll get it, it was not unanimous.
I apologize, we have, uh, did I leave Tom?
No, Commissioner Peterson voted no.
He voted no.
Yes, yes, I voted no.
She voted no.
I apologize, I thought, I thought you said yes.
No, I said no.
Six to one.
Stand corrected.
Well, it's still unanimous.
No, I just wanted to say that the, the, uh, the, the process of dealing with the, all the village, uh, team members has been fantastic, uh, everybody's been receptive, great with information, very responsive, um, and, uh, very, very helpful, so...
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
And this will be anticipated to go before the village board at the January 9th meeting.
Yes.
In addition to your B1 permit. With, with your B1 permit will be attached to that request.
All right. Next, under public hearing, PCC 0282024, request from Illy Knives Limited Liability Company Doing Businesses Amalgam Martial Academy, petitioner, and Basam Shaheen, the owner, for the property of 27 East Chicago in Westmont, for the following. A special use permit to operate a commercial school in the B2 general business district. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Frank Delo Jr., I'm the owner and, and head instructor of Amalgam Martial Academy. We've been, uh, here around the, the suburbs since 2015. Right now, we're in borrowed space, uh, up the street, uh, over at Cordia Senior Residence, um, and providing some classes for them as well, so I'm, I'm hoping, uh, you know, to get through this process and be able to, uh, provide more for the, the community in a dedicated space. So, I'm not, I'm not sure what your concept is of martial arts schools, I know there's several in the area, uh, within reasonable driving distance. Uh, our, our primary mission with our martial arts curriculum is to build health, character, and share the unique cultures that our martial arts come from. I know I'm part of what I teach... I know I'm, part of what I teach specifically is my family's Filipino martial arts system that I, I learned from my late father. But the other instructors and I also have diverse martial arts backgrounds in multiple styles. Hence the name Amalgam. We are a mix of different people, different cultures, different martial arts systems. So, and we have served, we have served a very broad range of students. You know, like I said, we're currently at Cordia. I am providing them Tai Chi and meditation classes, you know, things that are very appropriate for their, their physical capability. And I've worked with children as young as two to three. You know, they're not, they're not learning the same things that our competitive fighters are learning, but it's all appropriately scaled for age and capability. The benefit of martial arts, I know this personally because this is how I came to it, is I'm not, I have never been great with team sports, and I know there's a lot of other kids out there similar, similar to me, that they need an athletic outlet, but don't always fit in to the general provisions at the public school, you know, team sports. It's, it's been proven excellent for non-neurotypical learners, so I personally have an ADHD diagnosis. This has, this has come very, very handy for me because something like martial arts, you learn to use your whole self. You're not, you're not stuck to a chair, your, your whole, your whole self is involved. And I currently have students in classes that are on the autism spectrum, behavioral disorders, so it's, it's served, it's served a very diverse audience. For what it's worth, it's a minority-owned business, and unlike some other martial arts schools actually have professional education credentials. So a lot of martial arts schools, you just kind of open and claim whatever background you have. I have, I have multiple degrees. My bachelor's is in education, and I've been a substitute teacher around, around several local school districts since about 2008 or so, when I finished my master's degree. So I've been in classrooms. I know how education should operate. That's what I try to bring to my school. Hopefully that sets us apart for people. Our current operating hours, we're mostly in the evening because I, my other instructors and I, we still have our day jobs, and so do most of our clientele. So, most of our classes through the week, Monday through Thursday, it's five to eight. We have Saturday mornings right now from nine to just before noon, and then Sundays, I have a 3:00 PM class at the moment. Sorry, I'm stuck here. Well, while we're sorting that out, like I said, I have, I have classes serving very young to retirement. We have a Little Dragons class that's roughly preschool age. I have, I have our family classes split up by age group. So, early elementary and older elementary are split because they have different personalities. They learn a little differently, and we found it, it just works better for everyone. So you don't have a six-year-old trying to throw kicks with a 12-year-old. It's, it's more practical, safer for everybody, and everyone learns better. Teens, I don't have anyone enrolled right now, but teens is its own special group as well. I'm sure if you've had one, you know. And we have adult classes. The adult classes span from the same belt curriculum that the younger students are learning, and also, we have specific separate classes for each different martial art because some people like to mix up and have a specific focus. All right.
PowerPoint keeps crashing.
Sorry. You, everyone has their paper in case, but based on our, based on our hours and the location, the, we're expecting light to moderate traffic usually during our, our evening class hours. Most of our, most of our students, they're, they're onsite, so we don't really have drop-off, pickup. They're, they're there during the hours and then they leave. Most classes are an hour or less. The younger students have slightly shorter classes, so there's not, I don't anticipate any congestion from, from drop-off and pickup. Let's see. The parking, which isn't showing, but the, the space has its own lot, and there's, there's a fair amount of area, street parking if we need it, but our class sizes are, are capped at 10 at the moment, so they're, and a lot of them right now, they're families with multiple, multiple students coming from the same household, so I don't anticipate overrunning the parking lot even, even as we grow into that space for quite some time. All right, floor, floor plan, it's, it's a long space. Oh, you've, I don't know if you've been over there. Right now, it's Apple Valley, the specialty foods store. We really only, to operate, we really only need the, the front lobby seating, and the rest of the open space is used for training. We have mats that can fit the entire space if we want, but everything's modular, because we occasionally will have special events where, you know, it's a little more class, like sit-down class seminar format or something. We keep everything open and modular. I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Shaheen can, can talk more about the space since he owns it, but that's, that's our use. It's currently what we're doing at Cordia. It's, we get to use their open athletic room, and what we do doesn't require a whole lot. There, there's not going to be any build-out or anything. It's just open space and, and we operate. So, not sure what, what questions you might have for me or the business or the property owner, but I appreciate being able to come before you today.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So 27 East Chicago Avenue, that is just northeast of the village's downtown and is zoned B2. The petitioner is proposing to operate a martial arts academy, which is best classified as a commercial school in the zoning ordinance. As you mentioned, the subject property is currently occupied by the Apple Valley Natural Food Store, but they have recently announced that they'll be closing in the coming weeks. As the petitioner mentioned, Amalgam Martial Academy teaches martial arts classes to children and adults. They expect up to two instructors and 10 students per class, with their hours of operation being Monday through Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, Saturday from 9:00 AM to 11:45 AM, and Sunday from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Commercial schools have two special conditions in the B2 district, the first being that it may be approved administratively if the space is 1,000 square feet or less, and the second that the use may be permitted where the, it is established that there will be no appreciable traffic congestion or hazards to pedestrian safety. So this floor plan provided shows is basically 1,300 square feet. That's why it is not eligible for administrative approval. And in regard to the other special condition, the petitioner has provided a parking and traffic plan, which as we went over, the petitioner does not anticipate appreciable congestion or hazards to pedestrian safety due to the small class sizes and staggered class times. And since the property is a multi-tenant commercial building that existed before a 2020 text amendment, all parking provided on the lot is deemed conforming. For reference, commercial schools have a parking requirement of one space per two employees and one per seven students, so if this was a standalone building, the academy would be required to provide at least four spaces. The onsite parking lot provides more than those four spaces, and there are also roughly four on-street spaces directly adjacent to the unit. The findings of facts have been provided, and I'm happy to go over them if needed, and if not, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Well, who's next? Did you start last time?
Matt Scales wants to go first, he said.
No, I haven't got to start yet.
Okay, we'll let Matt go first. Go.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation and wish you the best in your business. I have no questions particularly, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I also have no questions, and I'm supportive of your application here.
Thank you.
Sawyer?
No questions either. Congrats on, you know, expansion and keeping the business here in Westmont.
Thank you.
Okay, great. You seem to be in the perfect spot for your business.
Perfect if I'm allowed there, sure.
That's all I have.
I have no questions or comments, but I really do like the type of business.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
No, no comments. Like, it's a nice addition to the community again.
Happy to be one. Thank you.
And it comes to me. I have a grandson in Madison, Wisconsin, who's been in karate for 10 or 11 years, and to watch a seven and eight-year-old kid, a child, get in front of the master and turn into a totally different person.
It excites me. This, this whole business excites me, you know, and I'm excited to share the benefit of that to the community, whoever will have me in the community, so.
So I would, under PCC 0282024, special use permit to operate a commercial school in the B2 General Business District, I have a motion to approve.
Motion, Scales.
Thomas, motion?
Second, Scales.
And Scales, second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. I'm glad you have 1,350 square feet, and we can hear your story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this item will also be heard before the Village Board on the January 9th meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening. Yes, Commissioner. Next item, public hearing, PCC 0302024, request from the village of Westmont for the following. Text amendment to Appendix A, Section 6.04, Paragraph A4, bulk and development standards in residence districts of the zoning ordinance regarding minimum lot area for multiple family dwellings. And we have staff.
I thought I'd stand here because of the computer.
Go.
Thank you, Chair. So, we have brought forth a text amendment that originated on our November 14th, 24th Special Community Development Committee meeting. CDC is what we call it. At that meeting, we were asked to present a very similar discussion topic with the committee regarding R5 and R4 properties and increasing the minimum or maximum density for those specific districts as it relates to multifamily only. At that meeting, they were in favor of us bringing a text amendment regarding the R5 specifically. However, we're bringing both the R4 and R5 as well, so we can have a broader discussion as necessary, and we won't, can't, we won't limit ourselves on the discussion itself if it's brought to the board for a final vote. So that's some of the background into, into why this is being brought here today. Behind all of this, we also have the zoning ordinance update that is taking place. This is not connected to that directly, but there are some nuances that I'll go over during my little presentation I have here. So all of you should have a map of the R4 and R5 properties specifically. You also have a zoning map and a land use map, if you care to look at it at all. You can see there are a few properties, R4 and R5 throughout the north end of town. Some, most of them are PDs or planned developments, which all have had some type of approval process tied to it. In the middle of town, we have the R5 that is along the tracks. However, as we've discussed prior, as a prior discussion topic regarding the zoning ordinance update, we are likely rezoning these properties to an R7 or a downtown residential. So there are some nuances to that as we move forward with our zoning ordinance update, but currently, these properties would be, would abide any text amendments that may move forward. Additionally, on the south end of town, we have some R5 properties that are right in the middle. The Towers is what we call them, and some apartments along Cass Avenue. And then on the south end of town, we've had a lot of annexed-in properties. When the village was expanding rapidly, we've annexed in a lot of property apartments, largely the Ponds, Willow West on the south end. Now, these aren't just multifamily. These are just the properties that are zoned R4 and R5, so some of them are single-family attached or the like. So, so any text amendment that would move forward would be affect, would affect these properties, these zoned properties. So, I'm going to give a brief discussion about what we talked about CDC. I know we had two commissioners that did sit during that meeting, so I apologize if I'm going over points you've already heard. And again, the, this commission's also invited to those CDC meetings if, if you're so inclined to sit at those. So first, we discuss at the CDC some other neighboring properties or neighboring municipalities and how they look at multifamily. First, it is important to note, and I believe this is furthered in my slide deck, that in 1986, we had, the village itself had processed a text amendment regarding multifamily developments, specifically their density and how the calculations, the minimums and maximums were calculated based on the bedroom counts. So you can see on this slide, we have what our current code allows and what was previously done in 1986. These are bedroom counts. They don't mean much to you by just looking at them right now, but the R4 district basically had a reduction in about, about 50% for their density in the R, or sorry, the R5 had 50% and the R4 had 25% reduction in the amount of units that could be put on a property, roughly. I've taken liberty to somewhat average this out on a dwelling unit per acre basis. So currently, we allow about eight units per acre for a multifamily development in the R4 and R5 district. In the, previously from 1986 before the text amendment passed, we have, the average was 12 units per acre in the R4 district and 16 units per acre in the R5 district. Now, you can probably see there's a distinction between the R4 and R5 district, and that is pretty common when you have a medium-density district, zoning district, that allows some medium-density developments, and then the R5 district, which is more seen as a higher-density district. This is very common for municipalities to do, to have some distinction between their zoning districts. However, that was taken away with the approved text amendment in 1986, which conflated the two as equal, allowing exactly the same amount of bedrooms per acre, or units per acre, for any development in either the R4 or R5 districts. Sorry, to further understand what that means on dwelling unit per acre basis, here you can see the different types of housing types. So you have multifamily, single-family attached slash semi-detached, and then two-family detached, and then we have the single-family detached properties. So in the R3 district, if you took an acre of land and divided it, divided it by five, you would get, or you'd be able to fit on one acre land, five lots of one single-family home. So currently, our multifamily allows eight units on one lot per acre. So you can see there's, the numbers for the multifamily and largely the single-family detached are greater than we allow in the single-family detached districts, the R1 through the R3 districts, but it is not much of a difference. in the single-family detached districts, the R one through the R three districts, um, but it is not much of a difference. So looking at other municipalities on this graph specifically, if you look at the red, we have the R four for Westmont and R five for Westmont. Those are our current standards all the way on the left. And then on the, right next to it, we have the pre-nineteen eighty-six amendment, um, for the R four and R five on a dwelling unit per acre basis. And I just talked about those, so I'm sure I won't repeat them. But we have neighboring municipalities and how their multifamily districts are divided. And you can kind of see in most, uh, districts and municipalities, for example, Lombard, um, has three different, uh, zoning districts and three different tiers of density in those districts, while we currently only have R four and R five that are equal. It's the same story with Downers Grove, um, that allows the most, uh, units per acre above forty for some of their higher development. Usually you see those near the interstates, um, and they also have their downtown residential area as well. Clarina Hills has closer numbers, but they're also, um, distinct in their two districts, um, and so on here. The main thing to point out is most municipalities don't have equal, uh, equal districts that have the same amount of multifamily with no real high-density zoning district. This is just general information on the background of the current land use in Westmont. I say current, it was done in twenty twenty, so a lot of developments actually aren't incorporated in this. For example, Quincy Station wasn't built at the time, um, so there are some distinctions there. Um, the one thing I failed to mention at the start of this is in our downtown, um, you may ask the question, how can, for example, Quincy Station have so many units? In the B one district currently, we have no density minimums or maximums, um, as long as it is in addition to a commercial entity on the property. So that's your mixed-use buildings. Usually you see a restaurant or some retail on the first floor. And they're allowed to have as many units as they want, um, on the, uh, floors above. Usually the driving factor is parking for those developments, how much parking they can fit on the property. Additionally, they usually have to come in for some type of FAR or floor area ratio variance. But generally, they're allowed to have a lot more liberty for the amount of units than the designated, uh, general residency districts that we have here. So the proposal for the text amendment itself is to revert back to the pre-nineteen eighty-six text amendment. It is a slight adjustment to the bedroom counts and the bedroom numbers as we currently calculate it. The, and I'll pull up, this would be the, the exact language, but to give you a better idea, I have this slide that gives you the dwelling units per acre and the adjustments it would make. So, uh, it would make an adjustment to the R five district by increasing, um, the amount of dwelling units per acre and drawing a distinction between the R four and R five, as was previously approved, um, in nineteen eighty-six. However, it also gets us closer to other municipalities, um, for what they allow in their multifamily districts. It doesn't get us to, I would say, equal standing entirely, um, especially for some of the, uh, our R four district, uh, changes. But it gets us better in line as we go through the zoning ordinance update. And then obviously, we've talked about, um, the comprehensive plan update that will likely be following the zoning ordinance update for a broader discussion at the community level for those changes. The language specifics are in your packet at the end. Um, I'm happy to discuss those or to clarify anything. That is the highlighted portion, the strikeouts. But I'm open to answer any questions and I'll stay up here. And then I'm sure we'll have other people say things.
If it's okay, before questions start, I, I, it's one of the reasons why I'm here tonight. So why are we talking about density? Why haven't we talked about density with all of the zoning ordinance updates that, and discussions that we've had here? And that's because, um, when staff was tasked with doing the major comprehensive zoning ordinance update, we knew that back in nineteen eighty-six, the village made a conscious effort to reduce density. And I'll get to that in a second, as to why the village did that. But basically, the zoning ordinance rewrite is very complex. And then trying to tackle, um, the question of do we like where our densities stand, um, is a much more in-depth topic. So staff was not, what, staff was basically going to take the old rules, move them into the new code. And then if and when ready to have that discussion about density, we would have that discussion on density. What, sometimes text amendments are initiated by staff. Sometimes they're initiated by petitioners. In this case, it was initiated by discussion at the Community Development Committee, which is represented by all the elected officials. And the reason that was discussed is because it's quite often that, um, developers come to staff and say, hey, you've got an R four and R five property that's sitting vacant. I'd like to build multifamily. And then staff immediately goes through our very complex calculation method. If you looked, we have to basically say, how many one-bedrooms are you going to have? How many two-bedrooms are you going to have? And we add up all those minimum square footages and that comes up with a, well, based on what you want to do, you'd need a lot that is thirty thousand square feet, but your lot is only fifteen thousand square feet. And usually that's the last we hear from them. They move on and say, your density is just too restrictive. So the CDC knows that staff gets those kind of requests and said, well, we would like you to process a text amendment. In this case, they authorized staff for the R five. And we said, listen, we're moving fast. We haven't had a lot of time to do a lot of research. Where are you comfortable with where that, that number lands? Do you want us to do a lot of research and see what everyone else is doing? Or do you just want us to restore what we had in the pre-nineteen eighty-six? And when you look at that bar chart that Scott provided, compliments to staff on their, their quick action to put some research together, because this is not easy to research. But basically, they, we, we looked at, at the other communities and you'll notice that there's similar color palettes and that's kind of, you, the yellows are one community together, the greens are another community. But you can see that they usually have a medium-density residential, which is that low bar, and a high-density residential is that, that high bar. And you look all the way over to the left in the village of Westmont, our medium-density, which is the R four and our, our, uh, R five, which is our high-density, is exactly the same. And it's pretty low in comparison to other communities. So are we out of line with other communities when we have those conversations with developers and they say, well, we're going to move on to the next town and invest there? If, this is why we, we hear that. So quickly, why did we make that change in nineteen eighty-six? So nineteen eighty-six was the end of the, the boom of construction that we saw on the south side of town. So a lot of our, our multifamily on the south side of town was getting built. There was at the time, no site plan approval requirement. So basically, if they could meet our density standards, they could just come in for permits, build what they wanted. It never came through planning and zoning. It never came through the board. So what it was is the community said, we want to maintain some control. And so the solution we made at the time was, we introduced site plan approval for multifamily and we took our density and like Scott described, in the R four, we cut it by twenty-five percent. And the R five, we cut it by fifty percent and made them equal. So there's really no reason to have an R four or an R five. They're basically the same districts. So what CDC said to us is, well, we're at least comfortable if you approach a text amendment to restore that R five. So why are you looking at both of those tonight? It's because we want to make sure that the board, if they change their mind or want to have more discussion about the R four, that they can have that option as well. Because if, when Scott's looking at this zoning district map and showing where are our R four and R five districts, the only real undeveloped lots are those R four districts on North Cass. That, those are basically where all those lots are sitting undeveloped. So that is where we would anticipate to see that. So what is, what is the net effect of a change like this? So I'm going to use a recent project, and I know I've got some new faces here. But let's talk about the project that was approved over the summer just across the street.
Townhouses.
Townhouses that were done. You remember, we talked about density when that came because they needed a density variance. So that project was about twenty dwelling units per acre. And, uh, the R five would have been, would have allowed about eight dwelling units per acre. Now, if there was a text amendment, I think Scott, the number was that the R five is at sixteen. Maybe, and actually, I don't know about the type of dwelling unit, but.
Yeah, it'd be based on bedroom count still, but this was an average.
Yes. So, so if you look at the pre-nineteen eighty-six R five, it varied from ten dwelling units per acre up to twenty-two dwelling units per acre. So would that project been more in line with the old density standards? Yes. They may have needed to knock a few dwelling units off that. So let's, let's use that sixteen dwelling units per acre, which is the average. So if that project came before us and it was twenty dwelling units per acre, it would be very reasonable for the planning and zoning to say, well, no, we kind of like our sixteen dwelling units per acre. You know, uh, why can't you meet that? You seem a little too dense. What we're very familiar with is the, the discussion of, well, your density would only allow eight. We can't get that return on investment with the price of property in the area. We need to ask for two or three times what your density is. It just gives the planning and zoning a better tool to say, well, is it, is it fairly aligned with our code? Or is it, are you asking for something really extreme from our code? So in terms of that project, you know, whether that was held to sixteen or whether the Planning and Zoning Commission was comfortable going from sixteen to the twenty that was being requested, it's not as much of a, a leap when those come in. So that's why we're here tonight. That's why we worked quickly, because staff was asked to bring this, um, with a, um, as good of the research as we can do. So hopefully you can recognize that, um, we had a purpose in nineteen eighty-six to do what we did. It, it basically took away all high-density zoning districts in our community, except for the downtown, because there's no limitation there. We were advised to bring this text amendment for the R five, but we think it's prudent to talk about both. So that's really why I wanted to state.
And the comp plan, does it address this as far as, uh, higher density near the downtown area?
So our comp plan does have lots to say about basically around our downtown. And it is a little vaguer in this area that is downtown adjacent. And so I'm going to stand on my, my planner education for a second, which is my opinion in some respect. We, when we did all of our downtown plans, when we did our comprehensive plan, the idea of people being in our downtown exclusively to get on the train was fairly, um, prominent. What we've seen post-COVID is that there are people that want to, want to be downtown adjacent, which basically means they're willing to live in the higher-density type developments that are not necessarily here to ride the train anymore. They work from home. They're here for our good schools. So, um, the old standard that we use, if you look in the old comprehensive plan, um, it, it used a walking distance from the train station and that drew a circle and said, this is where we want our high-density, walking distance to the train station. I, I anticipate we'll have active discussions when we go through the comp plan update of, well, there are areas still downtown adjacent, because our downtown is three or four blocks long, that seem appropriate for higher density that our old plans say are kind of out of walking distance. Well, I, I think the, the climate has changed. And that's one of the things that we'll probably discuss, is should there be higher density in proximity to that downtown, uh, area versus proximity directly to the train station?
Regarding R five, because we, you had mentioned, we had the discussion, one of the past meetings, around that being a different zoning district when the new zoning ordinance goes through, correct?
Yeah, so the, it is specific. So it's those properties along the tracks that are currently R five.
Yeah, right. Yeah, not all, yeah.
Not all, some of them.
Clarified, yeah, just the ones.
Yes. And that would be, uh, we're looking at making that what we call downtown residential district, like we discussed. Although this text amendment would still apply to them until we got to that point. If it's decided that we would rezone those properties or would go with that new zoning district there, that's still up for discussion at the public hearing for the zoning ordinance update. But additionally, there are other R five properties throughout town that, a lot of them are very high in density on the south end. And on the north end, we have some PDs that are also R five. So it's not just the downtown. Um, there are some distinctions, but largely most of the properties are in the downtown, yes.
Okay. And I guess how, how did, um, how did discussion arise around being like, let's go back to eighty-six?
So I'm going to, I'll speak for my research. Going back, what we, what I start with always is to see when the last text amendment was for that district or for that table. That was the last text amendment, was in eighty-six when we changed it. Learning history from why we changed it through their staff reports. They had an active discussion on not just density, but also changes of their downtown at the time. So they're trying to make larger changes at that same point. But there, there, I would say the text amendment was done as a reaction rather than, um, a.
Proactive.
Yeah, proactive, looking at other districts. A lot of their plans for the downtown never came to fruition. They had plans for transitional districts that never happened.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, just looking at it, I mean, from, I guess, the more proactive aspect, you know, is it enough, you know, it's, should we allow more density?
Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
I believe that that will be an active, um, well-researched, um, item as we go through our comp plan.
Yeah.
Um, so basically, where are the areas that we do feel that increased density is, um, effective? And that is why when staff was said, when staff was told like, uh, move forward quickly with the text amendment, the easiest for staff to say, well, we could return to what the old rules are, because we knew we were comfortable with it at some point.
Yeah.
What you're seeing is they might not be completely aligned with other communities. But we also want to make sure that we have the controls in place. So that if, if we do, um, up those densities, it is in a thoughtful, um, area versus across the village. So if.
That makes sense.
So the comp plan loves to do things like subareas. And so it could say, um, well, in this area, there are existing R four and R five properties. And, you know, increased density because of its proximity to the downtown, um, would be an appropriate consideration. And I'm just kind of winging it right now. So basically, we'd like that overriding plan to guide planning and zoning if people are asking for more density, rather than just upping that density throughout the village, which means that it can occur anywhere. I think there's more work to be done once we get through the zoning ordinance updates and move towards the comp plan. So one thing I don't think Scott mentioned is, it is incredibly difficult for staff, the way we calculate this, based on the number of bedrooms. Most communities don't look at the number of bedrooms. You heard Scott say dwelling units per acre. Nowhere in our code does it say dwelling units per acre. So if you are a developer and you were looking at a piece of land and you called Scott and said, how many units can I get on this piece of property? Because obviously, that's, that is a dollars and cents when you're looking at what they're, they're trying to get for it. And you got to factor how, how much parking and I need sprinklers and I need stormwater. We can't give a good answer, because usually, they don't know if they're going to have two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units or studios or what that mix is going to be. We, we basically point them to that table and we say, once you figure it out, there's your table. So one of the things I think that when you see the zoning ordinance come forward is we've tasked the, the consultant to normalize it and convert. is we've tasked the consultant to normalize it and convert it into dwelling units per acre so that when a developer looks at our code and looks at someone else's code, they can easily say, oh, well, if I build here, I can have this many dwelling units. If I build there, it's a certain other dwelling.
That's what you have to do. Angry Joe, well heartedly. This bedroom stuff doesn't work, you know?
Yeah, it seems like you probably never get the call back when you say, look at the table.
So if, if, if staff wasn't working quickly as they were directed, this would be a whole night of discussion, if not more than one night of discussion.
Definitely see that.
So, and I believe, and I'm going to take fault for this. When we had the discussion with the CDC, I believe the, the reason the direction went in the way it went was because we were, they were looking at these properties along the tracks. And they're like, well, until we have time to fix this properly, we would still like to see development happen along the tracks. And they saw R5, and that's why the direction was, go address the R5. And my misstep was I should have highlighted, well, that will eventually probably be rezoned to this downtown residential, whether we call it R7 or something like that, because we want to specifically have rules for along the tracks. But really, this is something that will affect the code until the zoning ordinance creates that new area. So we don't know what, that we want to raise those densities super high because it affects the whole village.
Yeah, sure, sure.
But we, we will properly fix the area along the tracks with that zoning ordinance text amendment. And then we'll move forward with the comprehensive plan where we get all the public input on what is the appropriate density in certain areas.
Yeah, of all, of all of the rest of R4 and R5. And is, what was, I guess, CDC's reasoning for not wanting to look at R4?
Well, I, I don't, I, I think that they were more concerned that R4 is more spread out through the village. And because we were tackling this fast, that that's where the direction came from. That it was much easier because there's a lot less R5 properties. The R5 properties that are basically dispersed throughout the village are zoned R5 because some developer developed that piece of property and built something there already.
Yeah.
And they needed the R5 designation. I don't think there's any R5 properties outside of the Burlington and Quincy properties that are sitting vacant.
Right.
Waiting for development.
So it's essentially, are we just freely asking questions here? So the rationale behind the R4 was because some of it's non-conforming as it currently is?
Well, this would remedy some of that.
Right.
And it doesn't remedy all of it because if you look at the, the comprehensive table in the back of your staff report, we, because one of the typical questions staff gets is, well, what about this project? What is that density? Because that gives me a mindset of how dense that is. And measuring densities are a little bit trickier as well because our codes don't say you exclude the roads or the private drives or the detention areas when you probably should have rules that say, well, no, this is what we exclude when we're calculating density.
So this is essentially is a bridge amendment until.
That is the best way to describe. And, and we, staff felt it was prudent to bring two bridges, one for R4 and R5, just in case when it got to the board, the board, because the worst-case scenario is the board said, we understand this a little bit better now that it's been discussed at planning and zoning. Maybe we should have authorized the R4 as well. So if the board says, nope, we were very purposeful, we didn't want to talk about the R4, then I won't be upset, Scott won't be upset if, if it is a negative recommendation on that.
What's the timeline to get past the bridge? Two, three or four years or?
The new zoning, you're talking about the new zoning ordinance?
Essentially, yeah, I guess.
Well, the comp plan.
The comp plan, yeah, right.
Obviously, we're trying to get the zoning ordinance, you know, I think we're probably thinking March.
Q1. Probably checks a more desirable area.
So March is in Q1.
Q1.
And, you know, we start a new budget in January. We have the money in the budget to hire a consultant in, in the next fiscal year, starting in January. So we're probably, we're hoping that as we are approving the zoning ordinance amendments, we at least have the consultant lined up to start the comprehensive plan. But a comprehensive plan process can be a year, a year and a half.
Right, for sure. So which, it's the chicken and the egg, which one's going to come first? The comp plan or the zoning amendment?
The zoning's first. So, and, and I know we're talking about which one comes first. We are just getting to the required zoning ordinance update that was required in the 2013 comp plan. So we, it's just, it's, we recognize that, you know, the, the new comp plan will, you know, drive probably more amendments to our new zoning ordinance. But our, our old zoning ordinance was so outdated, we had to get that at least squared away.
So to essentially allow for a developer to come in, potentially one of these existing R5s or something and/or R4s and get a project moving, which is going to take them a year to two years anyway. Let's all settle.
Yes.
And additionally, if they want more units than what would be allowed with this tax amendment, they can always come in for a variance.
Come in for a variance.
So it, it doesn't limit that. I, I think staff will be happier that they're not asking for a 400% variance. Any, you know, like, because, because when, when you have such low numbers.
It seems like so.
The requests are usually, always seem extreme.
But tall relative.
Yeah. Doesn't it seem like those requests are always going to continue to rise, you know, just with?
From a different, totally different perspective.
Yeah.
What would not only this place, Matt, what the new zoning ordinance do to property values in particular along where we want to rezone along the tracks?
I don't know if it would actually affect property values because usually the property valuation is just based on, is it multifamily, is it single family? And I'm by no means an appraiser.
Because I think it would go up. Wouldn't you think, if somebody could do a higher-density development by redeveloping this, my value just went up?
I think you talked about it, we talked about, we touched on it briefly when we talked about the downtown core and then like the core edge and going outside. I think.
Yes.
Off of CAS, those properties, I would say, yes, where now they can be row homes or townhomes, whatever, that transitional zone. But I guess along Burlington, they already can be multifamily, I think is your, the point you're making.
Yeah.
You know, but I see, I see what you're saying. Some, I think.
It, it seems like maybe it won't be an initial higher appraisal, but if someone was going to sell their piece of property and someone was looking to buy it, they could ask higher because they know the number of units is increased.
I would think.
Yeah. If you have the right, if you have the right buyer, for sure then, you know, if you have a woman in mind of developing, obviously then it's worth more. But I guess it depends on what they want the use to be.
I'm trying to look at it totally from a, a different perspective on, yeah, we're making these changes in anticipation of the big change in March. But what does this do to create, number one, non-conforming or actually conforming uses as we change this? What properties does it affect, you know, as far as, as properties that, that are, have already been developed? Does it create any kind of conflict? And then also, what does it do to the people that own these properties and to what benefit? But I, I can only look at it as being a benefit.
Me too, yeah.
Then what is the primary objection to this at all?
I don't think there's any.
Who is going to stand up and say they don't want it?
You can look back historically and Walt, Wally Van Buren used to always mention that there is a glut of dense apartment buildings in Westmont, many of which were annexed in to the village. And there was a fear amongst some of the village of perpetuating that dense apartment building development further. But in reality, when you look at the R4 district as it currently exists, it's all built out except for, as I think Joe or Scott pointed out, immediately on the northern edge of the downtown business district, there's some vacant properties. There's some R5.
That's limited though, there's not that many.
Potential, but most of the, most of the R4 is built out. And if someone wanted to rezone to R4, you know, property, let's say that's R3, the village certainly would have the right to say that's not appropriate and deny that. That's where I could see an objection coming from, a fear that this could lead to more dense apartment buildings throughout the entirety of the village.
Would the new zoning code require some sort of continuity or contiguity to existing, instead of spot zoning? Would that be addressed?
That's just an inherent maximum law.
Yeah.
That you shouldn't spot zone.
No spot zone, yeah.
It's illegal.
Michael, you were going to say something.
Yeah, like, going, just going back to 1986, so like, that's only in regards to density? Or is it to do with height or bulk or anything?
We are not addressing any analysis or changes to height, bulk.
At, at the time, 1986, they did not, it was not a part of their discussion.
The only thing I can think is, the current comprehensive plan addresses rental versus percentage of rental units versus owned. And the more, you know, large buildings that come in, it's going to affect that.
You're going to get height.
That's why, in, in a more perfect world, the comprehensive plan would be redone before, before these specifics are addressed.
Perfect world.
Yeah.
But also, we can at all anticipate that after the comp plan gets done, we're going to be coming back to do some other adjustments.
Yeah.
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
But it is what it is. I mean, it's a placeholder. I don't see any objection to this.
No, I don't see any objection either. I mean, I would encourage the village board to look at both R4 and R5. You know, especially if this is a stopgap and it's restrictive enough as it is. You know, I think you want to encourage, then, you know, I, I mean, the average goes up from, you know, four dwelling units on average, 7.99 to 12.07 in R4, which they're not looking at. I mean, it's not, it's hardly anything.
So this is a formal vote tonight though, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and, but we're not voting on the R4, that's just if they decide.
No, we would be voting on the R4 recommendation.
I wasn't sure because you said.
So what we did on this agenda item was we combined them. So if the motion to approve, it's basically to amend the, both the R4 and R5. Now, if someone on this commission wants to say, well, I'd like to separate that vote, then the proper motions can be made to do that. When we take this to the board, we're going to separate. So, so if this gets a positive recommendation for both districts, when it goes to the board, we're going to separate their votes so that they can. Because they were, the, the, the CDC indicated only one of the districts. We want to make sure we, we give the board the ability to consider each different district separately. And this group can consider it separately if you so choose. The way it's written on here is it combine them both.
Do they know it's coming that way?
They know that we are discussing this tonight. They have not seen an agenda item as how it will come to them yet, so.
So does anyone want this vote separated between R4 and R5? Are you okay voting together on both?
I'm good with it together.
Yeah, I'm good with it together as if, because if they're going to get it separate anyways.
Staff is looking at this as, as the, the numbers are still conservative in comparison to some of the other communities. But because we were working in a fast methodology, what we presented to CDC was, well, one of our options is we could just restore back to what we were.
Yeah.
And that is basically what the direction was for that R5 piece of it.
And the, the R7, that like might have higher densities and that might come around March or so?
That, that will come with the zoning ordinance update.
Right.
So one of the, I know that you haven't been around for a lot of those discussions. But basically, what staff and our consultant has said is that the properties along Burlington and Quincy are unique in trying to have them the same type of zoning district that we can have anywhere in the village, didn't seem right. So we were coming forth with a rezoning proposal for those properties along the tracks because that's what you tend to see in every community. You see more row homes, you know, along the tracks because the higher density is, not only wants to be closer to the train station, but, you know, the train can be noisy and smelly and, you know, and the, the higher density is a good buffer to the residential that, you know, is on the other side.
Yeah, like, I, I don't, I don't have any objection to the, to the bridge, especially both R4 and R5. I kind of think that it might be a bit of a short bridge because it, I mean, a developer buying a property is going to have 60 days, well, 45 or 60 days to close. By that point, they're almost at March and they're probably thinking, like, what are, what are those R7 codes? I'll just.
Let's wait for those.
Yeah, like, so the R4 and R5, the new 86 ones, the new 1986 ones, I don't know if they'll even be used because I think that by that point, they'll be putting in drawings for, for R7s. But I, again, I'm not objecting, I'm just.
Yeah, you're right. It may be a short bridge, but staff was directed to build that bridge.
We would have to remember that there's, it's, R4 and R5 are all their areas. I think we're talking about just along here, R4 and R5 are, you know, all across the village. So I think to your point earlier, it's like, we don't want to go too far too fast and then.
So I, I, to put it in another perspective, are, are you comfortable with this increase in density anywhere in the village where it's R4 and R5? Because that is what will happen. Now, we will come back with specialty stuff for the stuff along Burlington and Quincy, which probably will result in higher than the densities that R4 and R5 would allow. I can't remember what that number was. Adam, you put that together for me quite a while ago. Do you remember what the density in?
Not the top.
I'm putting you on the spot, so I apologize. But yeah, the, the, the R7 probably will be a higher-density district than the R4 and R5. So what it is, is you need to be comfortable that these numbers are applicable throughout the village, so.
So it would be, depending on how the text amendment, if it's approved with both, those numbers would be carried over to the zoning ordinance update for those density changes? It'd be translated to dwelling units per acre, but it would be translated for the R4 and R5 districts, regardless of if the R7 ever comes to fruition?
Yeah. That makes sense. To answer your question, yeah, I am, at least.
Joe, for me, it's, the other thing I have a question about, because it brought up, is the golf course. You know, somebody, a developer could come in and say that, you know, we want to change the zoning to this district. And that's where the new zoning code will be in place. And if we don't have a, a proposal by now, it will happen after that proposal or the zoning code is in place already. And that, I would think, would be addressed, wouldn't it?
So I was hoping someone would bring up that property and project. So how would this affect that? So.
That's what I'm asking.
It's, 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 in that district, it said, if you're going to have residential, you have to use the R4 standards. So I can't remember the exact numbers, but I want to say it was like 200 units that were being proposed on that piece of property.
That's the biggest part of development left.
So technically, this change would mean they could build more units than what was initially proposed. However, and Scott, please correct me if I say anything that is wrong. One of the things that was a deficiency in our existing zoning ordinance was it was very unclear about the land areas you should exclude when you are calculating density. So on that project, I could not exclude the detention ponds, which are unusable space. And the reason they were getting that high-density count was because they were allowed to count a lot more land area than some other communities would allow. I think we are refining and cleaning up the language on the density calculation in the zoning ordinance update to refine, is that true, that we're still?
Yeah, generally, the thought right now is to process it as a PUD, which any, any project that would come through on that property, any B3 property, we have to go through as a PUD and have those restrictions.
Have more descriptions on what we can include or exclude. So on the surface, they, that project would be able to propose more than the 200 that would be allowed. But once, yeah, but once we make the refinements to the zoning ordinance update, we're going to discount some of that land and so it might not be nearly as many more units as this calculation method was.
Because I think that back when that proposal of that, that petitioner that came in. came in with that development, one of the major objections was the density.
And the reason you saw lots of little lots with houses pushed together was, they were getting the advantage of all that land area that was unbuildable in their density calculation.
That could be used in that calculation, yeah.
We're looking at saying, well, you really can't count those areas, or you can only count half of those areas in your density calculations, because we really want to, we really want to consider your usable area, not your unusable area when we're calculating.
So that's really a key point, moving forward, to make sure, and the zoning change that we're going to make does have that in there, yes?
Yes. And actually, if, if you go and read our current code for PUDs, it says, if you're an R1, exclude your stormwater detention areas. If you're R2, exclude your stormwater. If you're an R3, exclude your stormwater. If you're an R4, it didn't say exclude your stormwater areas. So that's why they could have a big land area, and half of that land area was dedicated towards wetlands and ponds and other things, but they could still have a high-density count.
Yes.
Which resulted in small lots.
Does it make sense, Joe, to put that, that information in this text amendment?
Yeah. It makes sense. We would have to go back and republish, and we have not had that discussion with CDC, so we should formally have that discussion with CDC before we go do that.
I think the better route is to work on that with the new zoning ordinance update.
It, it, it is, I'm going to say it's a loophole until the new zoning ordinance goes into effect, if this is approved, so.
Well, and, forgive me, and I'm feeling a little slow tonight, but that would have to be rezoned to R4, just for them to take advantage of that bulk, correct?
I believe, I believe they were still needing to rezone that area. I, I can't remember exactly.
They were going to rezone, yeah.
Basically, the...
But the rezoning that you're talking about tonight doesn't just give that property the ability to do that.
No, that, there's a, there's a complex approval process on those properties up there.
Any developer would have to come through.
Yeah, like Scott said, we had planned on doing that as a PUD, and that came through as a PUD.
Yes.
Because there was different types of, of, of units in there.
Well, and they didn't subdivide out, each house wasn't on its own lot.
Right.
If it had been on its own lot, the lots are all substandard and meet setbacks, things like that.
Yeah.
But it was a development on a huge piece of property.
Right. A rental, though, thank you.
Yeah.
And besides the golf course, is there other areas? If we go to the 1986, and it's ambiguous about what, about the retention pond aspect, like, is there other, is there other properties in the village that you're concerned that they might do the same trick as the golf, golf course was?
I don't think there's a lot of property in Westmont that, you know, is a large land area that can be, be acquired and redeveloped like the golf course.
It's a retention lot.
So.
Oh, is it? Pretty sure.
So, so do I, do I have any other properties in mind? No, I don't, I don't have any other properties that come to the, to my, so.
And, thank you.
Isn't there a forced sale sign on it?
The golf course at Tamao, is that the one in Northland, Cas?
Isn't there a forced sale sign on it?
Yes. Crest.
That's the hotel.
Yes.
Just wondering, they were trying to sell it recently.
And so I, I think we've had a pretty good discussion here, and I agree, unamended as it is. I think I can just say, all in favor of this request from the village regarding this zoning text amendment. In favor to carry this forward to the...
Well, we do need a roll call vote for this.
So a all-in-favor won't do it?
Correct.
Okay. Then we'll make this straight. Do I have a motion to approve this text amendment?
Motion to carry.
Second, Scales.
A motion, a second discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
And, okay, I'll just add that, so the two village-initiated items tonight are going to the board on December 19th. So we already talked about the subdivision, which was our first case, but this case is going to the board on the 19th as well. Okay. Chris?
Did you include in that, in that motion, both R4 and R5? Or did you do them both, or not? I didn't hear that.
They're both in there.
They're both in there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's how it's written.
Yes, it was written that way. Okay, next item, open forum, no one's present. Next item miscellaneous, our next meeting will be the second Wednesday of January the 8th. And before we conclude, I would like to tell everyone here and the TV audience that this will be Commissioner Scales' last meeting. He, the mayor has announced that he will be temporarily appointed to the village board and, and for a period at least through next April, I believe. And, and so, I'd like to thank you for your service on the board. I would like to point out also that you have been on this commission for five years. And so I'd like to present you with this five-year pen from, you would have gotten it from the village if you had attended the luncheon today.
I attended, too. I had a sick kid at home. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.